Okay, good evening, sorry about that. This is a regular meeting of the Brookline Select Board for Thursday, October 6th, 2022. I have a couple of announcements that I'd like to share and then I'll open it up to other board members. I want to update everyone on a conversation that Chaz and I and Melissa had with the Chair of the MSBA last Friday. I requested a meeting because we have the Pierce project as a lot of people are aware. And we were anticipating that they will take up our project in December and it would activate a clock. And that we would need to have a vote by the end of April, but we have our annual town election in May. So what I did was I asked for permission for them to extend their deadline so that we don't have to have two separate elections. To alleviate some of the burden on the town clerk's staff at his office. So they granted it and I am very much appreciative of their partnership and willingness to to hear our challenges and to work with us. So then I will also share that we have Harvest Fest at Putterham Golf Course. This will be from 12 noon to 4:00 PM on November 5th. There will be live music, hayrides and a magic show as well as a 1K and 5K race in the morning. The Jennifer A. Lynch Committee Against Domestic Violence is hosting its 13th Annual Vigil Against Domestic Violence on Thursday, October 13th at 4:00 PM at the Remembrance Garden located at 11 Pierce Street. And finally, Black and Brown Club is hosting a Leadership Lunch Meeting on Friday, October 14th from 1:00 PM to 3:30 PM at 77 Village Way for anyone who is interested. Chaz, I think you had an announcement and an introduction?
Yes, I am very pleased to announce and introduce the newest member of the Town Administration Staff, the Assistant Town Administrator for Finance, Charles Charlie Young. That's right, we hired another Charles. We have to compete with the Legal Division with whom we share the sixth floor who have two Johns and now we have two Charles. And all is going well. Charlie joined our staff on Wednesday and has already been making a huge difference in the process, essentially leading up to this. What is going to be a long and difficult but engaging budget season. And we are very grateful to have him on board. So Charlie, if you want to introduce yourself to the board and say a few words, we're very grateful to have you onboard. Welcome to Brookline.
Yeah, thanks very much for the welcome, Chaz, and hello to the Select Board. I'm very honored to be here tonight. I'm excited to be a part of the team. And I'm originally from Maine. I came down to Massachusetts with the hopes of joining local government teams like this one and ended up getting my Masters of Public Administration at Suffolk University. And for the last five years, I've been the purchasing agent and financial analyst, but essentially the budget guy for the town of Weston. So this move comes at a great time for me and the welcome that I've received, not only from Chaz, from everyone, has just been great. So I'm, as I said, just very excited and happy to be a part of the team.
Excellent, welcome as a fellow transplant from Maine.
Oh, that's awesome. It's a small world, isn't it?
It really is. Excellent.
Especially in Maine.
Yes, yeah, well, it's true, but the population of Maine is, you know, it's only a fraction of a fraction of a lot of states. So it's true.
Yeah, you put two Mainers in the same room who don't know each other, within five minutes, you've got at least two connections together.
Yeah, there's plenty in common, I'm sure, isn't there Heather? Yeah. Not to mention that we're both in the, in the local government sphere. So yes.
Well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Any other board members with announcements that they would like to make?
I could make one if that's okay.
Yes, John and then Mike?
And I apologize for not raising my hand. I'm struggling to find the function, but I just want to say Brookline is the town that never sleeps. I, I don't know exactly how Chaz got in front of his camera, but less than 20 minutes ago, I was at the annual dinner to honor members of the Citizen Emergency Response Team. Chaz was there as well. So was Chief John Sullivan from our fire department. And I'm sure, and I know I saw Casey Hatchett from the Police Department, but I'm sure she's not the only one who was from the Police Department who was there. Sigal Reese from the Public Health Department, a number of folks. You know, doing, doing what is owed to some terrific volunteers, the Citizen Emergency Response Team. Hundreds strong in Brookline and as Sigal Reese pointed out, has been going strong for many years, which isn't true of every community where they, you know, started a cert team. These things don't just sort of keep going on their own momentum. They, they require nurturing and Brookline has been doing the right kind of nurturing to keep cert going. That was, that was my last stop before I got here, but my stop before that was at the Chamber of Commerce Oktoberfest at Coolidge Corner, which should be wrapping up in the next half hour or so. But a terrific turnout of folks and a lot of fun and a lot of great food, including bratwurst and sauerkraut and cupcakes, which is, you know, everybody's favorite combination, right? But I survived it and I'm here to enjoy tonight's meeting, but I just wanted everyone to know Brookline is a pretty amazing place sometimes in terms of the level of activity. And then I passed through the area of the high school and I apologize for not knowing what was going on there, but boy, was it drawing a crowd. Huge number of people at the high school tonight. So pretty interesting night in Brookline.
Excellent. I think it's back to school night. Lots of parents meeting their kids' teachers.
That's kind of what it looked like.
And that's where Miriam is right now, which you will hopefully join us later. And I see that I am not the only Select Board member with a furry friend that is trying to get in the camera shot.
Yeah, I think he's trying to show me how to raise my hand.
Mike, did you have an announcement?
Yeah, I just, a bit of an update on the, on ARPA grants that from the first round. We're very slowly, unfortunately, in my view, getting finished up with the paperwork that's necessary in order to actually transfer funds to the grantees. And we have a small work group tomorrow meeting to see if we can actually nail the rest of that down. And I'm hoping that we can move things along a little faster for the second round. This first round has been a bit of a learning experience. We do have to comply with the federal regulations in terms of getting reports back and so forth. But it has taken longer than I think any of us expected and I know it's taken longer than the grantees expected. I think we have to apologize for that.
Thank you. Is that yet for announcements? Oh, Chaz?
Thanks. Just to follow on from John, this was the 13th Annual Cert, the Citizens Emergency Response Team and MRC, Medical Reserve Corps Dinner. And I just wanted to briefly cite the honorees, since these are volunteers who go above and beyond for the town and in a group of 750 people, which is incredible. Having volunteers who are, who excel even at that level, something that I think we should, all of us on the administration side who rely on these volunteers, local citizens to do the work augmenting our, our work as town employees in an emergency. So I just wanted to cite the 2002 Trudy Cohen Volunteer Service Award recipient, Chris Santos, 2022 Community Emergency Preparedness Response Award recipients, Sana and Sharon Reddy, who are siblings at the high school. Congratulations to you both. And the 2022 Emergency Preparedness Buddy of the Year, who was Linda Cordis Rangel. So thank you to all of you. In a team of many, you stand out and that's really saying something. Thank you for all the work you do assisting town administration on disasters and emergencies.
Thank you very much. They certainly came in handy during this pandemic. Any other announcements before we move into public comment? Okay, let's go into public comment.
I think that was my cue to the public. Thank you for joining us for this public comment segment. Excuse me, this is an opportunity for us to hear from, to hear your perspective on issues in Brookline that matter to you. We have a few rules. Each person speaking tonight, limited to three minutes. You don't need to use the entire time, but you may, if you like, please refrain from personal attacks and from addressing personnel issues during your comments. Members of the public sometimes raise questions. We may be able to provide a quick answer to a question, but are more likely to work with staff to get a more thorough answer and we will respond over email. We'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time is up, please conclude your remarks at that time. And if you have more to say, you're welcome to send an email to board members expressing your thoughts in greater detail. And Devin, who is first on the list?
The first person signed up for public comment is Carla Benka. He's been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Good evening. My name is Carla Benka. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 14 and a recently retired member of the Advisory Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. Last week I posed a question on the listserv to my colleagues in town meeting and tonight I'd like to pose the same question to you. There are two debt exclusion ballot questions in the offing. One next month for the fire station renovation project and one presumably in May, as the Chair has said, for a new pure school. It appears likely that there will also be an operating override on the ballot. And there are numerous new fees and surcharges embedded in proposed articles on the November town meeting warrant. So there, here's the question. Who or what will serve as a source of impartial information for Brookline residents and other taxpayers, providing both a description of all the proposals currently in the pipeline and the financial impact of those proposals on those required to pay the increases? Some have asserted that it's the responsibility of the voters to educate themselves and that they can learn about the proposals by listening to project supporters and opponents and by reading campaign literature. I don't think anyone would claim that such sources are unbiased. Voters deserve straightforward information in order to make an informed decision. It's as basic a principle of good government as you can get and an example of the type of transparency to which voters are entitled. A fellow town meeting member has noted that two years ago, voters in Braintree were asked to approve a debt exclusion ballot question for a new middle school as well as improvements to several school buildings. The town posted a debt exclusion calculator on its website. Voters could enter their address and be provided with the annual estimated impact of the debt exclusion on their property tax bill. I strongly urge the board at the very least to ensure that such a calculator is included on the town's website. Along with notice that up to three overrides as well as increases in fees and surcharges are currently under consideration. I also encourage the board to ensure that facts are promoted about each proposal. The type of information that an average Brookline voter who's not involved in civic affairs and who no longer has even a local newspaper to help keep them informed would want to have as they prepare to vote this November and subsequently next May. Thanks very much.
The next person signed up for public comment is Marissa Vogt. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Hi, my name is Marissa Vogt and I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 6. And I wanted to just quickly speak about another topic that was raised in the listserv this past week, which was budget realities have forced some reductions in hours for some part-time library staff. I, I wanted to look into this a little bit more, so I went through some old budget files and I looked at the the libraries budget for the past, I think, six or seven fiscal years, going back to 2016. And if you, if you look at it, there's, there's this very disturbing trend that either if you look in, in terms of like inflation or in terms of the libraries, percent of the total town budget, the library budget just has, has not been, has not been properly funded. In 2016, the library was 1.7% roughly of the town's total budget and it has steadily decreased to about 1.3% in this last fiscal year. It's also not keeping up with inflation. So you know, just now that we have a new budget person and a new town administrator, I just want to urge the folks on the sixth floor and the Select Board to help reverse this really troubling trend. The libraries are really important to our family. They're a wonderful community resource. Every time we were there, there are, there's just families there. It's such a welcoming environment, such a multicultural environment. The language access they provide, the, the staff that is particularly in the children's room of the main branch are just the warmest, most patient, wonderful people. So just to keep in mind that we have this amazing, wonderful resource and we need to fund it better. Thank you.
At this time, there are 33 attendees. I see Regina Crowley has her hand raised.
No, I'm all set.
Okay. At this time, there are 34 attendees and no one is using the hand raised or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Thank you so much, Devin. Oh, do we have a latecomer? Randy Park?
Hi Randy, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to speak on Warren Article 39 about the golf course. I'm a 31-year resident of Brookline, have been a coach, player and user of just about every rec facility in the town. Attended and listened to many of the Parks and Rec meetings over the years, particularly over the last year. I would like to urge the board that we have a generational opportunity here. I have seen the revenue issue about the golf course overstated. And I think we're lacking vision and innovation from our Parks and Rec Commission in how to move forward with this issue. There's an old saying that if things don't change, things will stay as they are. And as many of you know, the status quo in Brookline for the last several decades has been there's no space for any town need. We're short on fields for all of our recreation activities for both children and adults. And we have 120 acres that is currently being used by 85 people on average per day. If you look at the stats from the golf course itself. And meanwhile, 60,000 people plus are sort of left begging for space. Nine holes at Lynch is an obvious compromise. It's been kicked to the side by the current planning process. And I urge the board to support moving forward with a nine-hole option. And even just the Warren article, which just simply asks for an evaluation of such options. Thank you.
I now assume that that is the conclusion of public comment. We're getting a report that audio is not working for the YouTube stream, so I assume that Devin is working with our great partners at BIG to address that. I will also remind attendees that we have scheduled public hearings for the warrant articles at a later time on our agenda. Okay, anything else before I move into miscellaneous? Seeing nothing. Regina actually called me right before the meeting and said that there is an error in the minutes from September 28th. It wrongly attributes the town clerk to putting forward Michael Hex's name for consideration. The town clerk put forward three names for consideration. I moved Michael Hex. So Kate, can we make sure that that is accurately reflected in the meeting minutes from September 28th?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, with that change, I will move the meeting minutes from September 8th and September 28th as amended. All those in favor? Oh Bernard, did you have a comment? You'll have to unmute.
I just wanted to let the board know that I made some edits to the minutes just to clarify the discussion around the pure school.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from September 8th and what was it, 28th? Please say aye, Bernard?
Aye.
John? You'll have to unmute, John.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, the remainder of the miscellaneous, I will read through it. Question of approving an agreement between the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and the town to accept up to $200,000 in a bottleneck grant to cover the cost of traffic signal system timing improvements along the Beacon Street corridor. And question of approving an agreement between the Massachusetts, Massachusetts Department of Transportation and the town to accept $310,150 in winter recovery assistance program called the RAP program funding to address winter-related impacts on our public ways. Thank you, Mastah. All those in favor? Bernard?
I thought I, I would, I would like to say though, I hope we can get a grant for the road between Brookline and Davis Avenue, which is a bottleneck and forces cars to stand in line spewing forth noxious fumes as we're waiting for the light to change, so.
Well, be sure to yes, or the, any of the transportation board members. Um, okay, Bernard and John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you so much. Our first order of business for our calendar, Meredith Mooney, our Director of Economic Development. Have you been here since your promotion?
I think this is my first time.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Very happy to be here. As Chair Hamilton said, I'm Meredith Mooney, Economic Development Director. I'm going to pull up my screen. So I'm here on behalf of the outdoor seating, staff outdoor seating working group to present a couple of action items related to the town's outdoor dining program. And so the outdoor dining or outdoor seating working group is a multi-department group that includes DPW, building, health, police, fire, the licensing office and town council. So the two action items would be the review and approval of revised regulations and guidelines as well as a vote on the scheduled fee increase for the town's outdoor dining program. Excuse me. So the last time that we talked about outdoor dining with the Select Board, it was about a year ago in September. So I just wanted to provide a quick recap of where we've been, where we're going with outdoor dining. If you'll recall, in June 2020, shortly after the pandemic started, the state introduced several initiatives that provided flexibility to municipalities as well as restaurants that allowed them to flex their restaurant service to expand at outdoor dining areas. And in Brookline, a big point of experimentation for us was outdoor dining in on-street parking spaces. We did have some outdoor seating prior to COVID, but not in parking spaces adjacent to restaurants. So that temporary program went through a couple of iterations just because we were flying the plane and building it simultaneously, learning as we went with standing up this new program. And in May of 2021, given the success of expanded outdoor dining, town meeting approved general and zoning bylaw changes that sort of laid the groundwork for the town to continue with expanded outdoor dining after the state of emergency provisions had ended. And then in September of 2021, the Select Board approved a permanent new outdoor dining program, a set of regulations, a license and fee structure. So those regulations took effect as of April 2022. So the, addressing the, the issue of the scheduled fee increase before I flip ahead to the fee implementation schedule, I just wanted to review the outdoor dining fee structure. So there are four different fee levels based on different combinations of annual versus seasonal and sidewalk versus on-street outdoor seating. And there are two fee components. There's the sort of base administrative fee, which reflects, you know, the extent of administrative bandwidth, staff capacity associated with the different types of outdoor seating proposals. And then the use fee, which applies only to on-street outdoor seating and the use fee is intended to capture estimated forfeited parking meter revenue for each outdoor dining area. So in the right-hand column, you can see the totals for all the different license types. And especially for on-street seating, it's several thousand dollars. These are significant fees. So when the Select Board approved these fees last year, there was the provision that the fees be phased in over the course of several years to minimize the potential for the outdoor dining program to undermine or hinder restaurant recovery emerging from the pandemic. So for 2022, we assessed just the administrative fees. And this evening, what the Select Board will be voting on is whether or not to move forward with the proposed 2023 fees, which you see in the second column, and that would include the base administrative fee plus, for the on-street, the base administrative fee plus a third of that estimated use fee. And then also, there was a discussion, a suggestion from the Economic Development Division expressing interest in proposing an alternative fee structure, perhaps one that wasn't tethered to the forfeited parking meter revenue. We've done some preliminary investigations about this, but we don't have any substantive updates or an alternative fee structure present at this point. So this is the, the current fee proposal increase on the table. And then in addition to phasing in the fees, the Select Board also set the requirement that a Select Board review and vote would be required before the fee increase would be implemented. So in terms of, this is my last slide. This is an overview of the proposed changes to the outdoor dining regulations. I think it's important to note that Brookline has been a leader compared to peer communities in terms of making a commitment to establishing like a permanent expanded outdoor dining program reflecting lessons learned during the pandemic. We've gotten inquiries from Boston and Cambridge and other places that were still in the process of finalizing a permanent outdoor seating program themselves to get some input from our experience. So it's, it's a new program, even though, you know, we had a couple iterations of the temporary program and this was our first year with the permanent program. It's still very new and you know, the expectation is that we'll continue to learn as we live and implement the program year to year. So these sets of changes really are intended to address issues, opportunities that staff saw in implementing the permanent program structure this year. So rodent and pest control requirements, Boston, Metro Boston, cities and towns are all experiencing this post-pandemic phenomenon of having rat control, rodent, rodent control issues. So the Health Department did include clarifying language as well as some additional requirements specific to rodent control requirements regarding outdoor seating. Proof of consent from impacted abutters. There are instances where outdoor seating areas extend either on the sidewalk or in parking spaces in front of a neighboring business or property. So the town wants to be reassured that that extension of the outdoor seating isn't negatively impacting a neighboring business. And so we just like that proof of written consent from impacted abutters in those cases. Precedence of public way infrastructure over private outdoor dining areas. We did receive a handful of requests to relocate bus stops, move street furniture, remove parking meters. So staff felt it would be helpful to have some language that explicitly said that the town was not in a position to reconfigure the sidewalk area to accommodate private outdoor dining areas. Liquor license extension of premises to include new expanded outdoor dining areas. So this, I referenced that the state provided some flexibility at the start of the pandemic that allowed cities and towns to accommodate temporary expanded outdoor dining. This was mostly in flexibility where restaurants could serve alcohol. This was mostly in flexibility where restaurants could serve alcohol to expanded outdoor dining areas that aren't typically included as part of their licensed premises. So that was a state of emergency provision that the legislature has extended um a few times at this point. And it's currently due to expire in March. So we really don't want our restaurants to be in a situation where they make an investment in an outdoor dining license, aren't able to follow through with their um extension of premises application and find themselves in a situation where they can't serve liquor to their expanded outdoor dining areas. So we're just trying to set restaurants up for success with this added requirement. And then the special outdoor seating cases, uh if you'll recall, there are a handful of restaurants that have outdoor seating on public property that's sort of beyond the pale of the standardized format of our regular outdoor dining program. So examples of this would include uh Prairie Fire utilizing a portion of the Webster Street Law in Coolidge Corner, Hamilton's back patio space, and uh in Brookline Village Prairie Fire, no Punch Bowl, um utilizing a portion of uh closed river road roadway area for outdoor dining. Staff had intended to explore sort of a different vehicle for accommodating these special outdoor seating cases long term. We explored the idea of maybe using an RFP process, um but Dave Jenikakis and the procurement office said that that wouldn't be a suitable vehicle for what we were trying to do. So uh we're still kind of working through long-term, the future of what to do with these outdoor seating cases. There's a lot of variation just in those three examples that I mentioned. Uh, so for the time being, we'd like to integrate the special outdoor seating cases into the outdoor dining program regulations, making it clear that those cases are still subject to the outdoor dining regulations and will be approved on a case-by-case basis with additional requirements or fees depending on select board uh discretion and other boards and committees input. And then finally, uh additional enforcement language to improve compliance uh with licensing and fee requirements. I'd say across the board for all of the departments with enforcement responsibilities, um as we were making the transition from the temporary to the permanent licenses this year, there was the sense that um the lack of explicit enforcement language in the outdoor dining regulations was a hindrance in um departments being able to more effectively address issues of non-compliance um with the outdoor seating program. Um, so we did incorporate that language as well. And um just as a a separate update, the uh Representative Vitolo's office was able to secure a fifty thousand dollar state budget earmark for the town for the purpose of um providing grants to help incentivize the construction of platformed outdoor seating areas for the on-street parklets. Um, and those are regarded as much more ADA-friendly configurations for outdoor seating. Aesthetically, they're also much better looking. Um, so we're in the process of shaking that money loose from the state and hope to be rolling out that grant program um to provide that extra resource incentive for restaurants uh at some point in the winter. And that is the end of of the update.
Great, thank you so much. Um, so I'm going to open it up to questions, but just want to be crystal clear. Are you looking for a vote from us this evening?
Yes, uh Tiffany in the licensing office will be um sending out the license renewal information to restaurants at the end of the month. So we just wanted to get the direction on the fees and the updated regulations sorted this evening if possible. So it can be included in that information packet.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mike?
Thanks, uh, thanks very much, Meredith. That was a very thorough um and thorough and concise. Those are two things that often don't go together. That was great. Uh, I do have a question about it. So uh, what the question I have is, do we have any sense of how long it will take a restaurant to recover the cost of the fees? Uh, you know, if you say that the marginal profit or the the that from a meal is ten dollars, even if, you know, uh, that's um uh a quick calculation is like, that's forty-five days worth of service serving. Is that are we in the right ballpark? Have we thought about that? Have we talked to restaurant owners about uh about that aspect of it?
That is a a great question and a great assessment metric, which I can certainly follow up on that and make some increase to restaurants. I would say that um circling back to the initial fee discussion a year ago, um, we did do a survey of restaurants to gauge willingness to pay, you know, in anticipation, a- across the board, restaurants will tell you that they think it's fair that there be a license fee and they contribute um something for um continued access to public space for their private restaurant dining. Um, there was definitely a gap in terms of willingness to pay and sort of uh the expense in terms of the forfeited parking meter revenue.
Yep.
Which is why the Economic Development Division had sort of um tried to assess the select boards openness to an alternative fee structure. Um, but we have not gotten very far um in exploring that. And I I do think that the as this is a new program and we're looking for opportunities to improve it, um, taking up a closer look at the way that we're structuring the fees is definitely an opportunity for improvement or innovation.
And if if we're voting tonight, we'll be voting on the two-step um fee schedule that you have. So uh the full impact doesn't hit until twenty-four, twenty twenty-four anyway.
So the the full fee, so the fees, if if the select board, um also the fee implementation schedule was available to restaurants last year, so this is an anticipated fee increase. Um, so they would take effect as restaurants are applying for this upcoming year. So it would take effect in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, but there's you, the the full step up to nine thousand dollars and some change, or is
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the full step that's phased in, and I think it takes effect in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, sorry, yeah, twenty twenty-five. Okay, so there's certainly some time to go back and ask the question and uh because certainly I can appreciate that we're losing parking revenue, we're picking up some not a huge amount, but some uh meals tax revenue uh from it. Uh, so that's a bit of an offset. Uh, but I'm particularly interested to get some sense of how long it will take a typical restaurant to recover the cost.
Can absolutely look into that.
Okay.
That this is part of public policy that I've always found very interesting since uh my first year of grad school where we had to discuss, you know, time savings. People, people want to quantify what time savings is, and there is actually a calculation behind that, but it's mostly made up numbers. Um, so you know, how how much is a parking space worth? Um, we can quantify it based on what we would have gotten if somebody, you know, had rented that space with a meter uh for all hours that is available. That is usually highly unlikely that a meter will be used for the entire duration that is available. Um, John?
Hmm, thanks for the uh, but yes, thank you for the report, Meredith. It uh really covered uh a lot and there's a lot to sort of take in. Uh, I I want to just provide an anecdote, which is that, um, I think I mentioned earlier that one of my stops on the way to the meeting tonight was uh the Oktoberfest at Coolidge Corner, um, and that was uh sponsored by the uh Chamber of Commerce. And I can safely say I have never had a casual conversation with someone from one of our business, uh retail businesses, either Coolidge Corner, Washington Square, or Brookline Village, or St. Mary's, you name it, or Cleveland Circle, never had a conversation that didn't um include them saying to me, uh, whatever you do, keep the outdoor dining. Um, that it's pretty much universal uh that there has been, it's been a sort of a lifesaver for a lot of businesses, not just the restaurants themselves. Um, and that it is what has allowed our retail um deck districts to gradually, gradually crawl back, you know, come back to life, rebound, um, hopefully make some some profits. Uh, um, you know, if not now, in the near future, attract new businesses. So it's vitally important, and I'm just not, I I just want to be one hundred percent reassured that the process that was followed um to get to where we are tonight with this presentation uh is a process that uh, you know, tomorrow we'll hear from those same businesses that we got it right. Um, do you feel they've had a full um opportunity to provide their input and has their input been reflected in what we're being asked to vote on tonight?
So in terms of, there was particularly leading up to the um developing a finalized set of regulations for a permanent outdoor dining program. There was surveys, there were a lot of conversations with Small Business Development Committee, individual restaurants um regarding the the structure of the new permanent program and specifically about the fee question. So as I said, there is a gap in the reported willingness to pay and what the town would need to feels it needs to recoup in terms of the forfeited parking meter revenue. So I I can't assure you that with this, the implementation or moving forward with the scheduled increase that we won't receive complaints from restaurants. Um, and I think, you know, we've just been operating in such an era of uncertainty and the assumption we were optimistic and hoping that restaurants would be um every year farther along, that much farther along in their recovery from COVID. And we know that post-COVID has come along with its own set of um challenges in terms of inflation, staffing continues to be a problem. Um, there's still a lot of challenges and headwinds facing the restaurant industry. So um I I do think, you know, and the fee implementation schedule has been available for over a year at this point. Uh, so I think restaurants know that this was coming. Um, and and I think that's sort of the the best answer I could provide at this point.
Uh, let me add on to that answer. Meredith was being very polite. We will get complaints because the same question you could ask, do people want to pay for parking? How many people would say that they want to pay more if for parking? Some, some actually would, you know, acknowledge that they are taking, you know, a a public space and that they need to pay for its exclusive use. But a lot of people don't want to pay for things. Um, and we, we have seen on this board time and time and time again, well, I didn't know. I was never notified. And we have, you know, the letter sent to their home address from two weeks ago to prove it. Um, people are going to claim that they didn't know, even though we have come close to enacting this, not once, I think not even twice, but almost three times now over the the course of the pandemic. Um, so we will get complaints. We, this is an experiment, as I think Meredith was trying to signal to us in her presentation. We're not going to get it right, like right off the bat, but enacting it will let us know how far we are from, I think, the target that gets us most of the way there with most of our businesses who understand that they need to pay for this exclusive right for public property. Uh, Chaz?
I just wanted to add add to that. Um, and I I again, I think to Meredith's point, um, it is also not that over the course of the year that these fees have been available, that her team has said, well, this is set in stone and we're not listening to community input. To the contrary, I think over the course of this process in which the select board has said several times, um, let's wait and see, let's figure this out. Let's see how, see how the winds are are blowing. Um, the team has been in continual uh evaluation of the situation on the ground and mindful of that. And I think the presentation reflects that this is the best approach uh under the current circumstances. Um, it is moving out into uncharted waters, but it has been doing so in a respectful uh and engaged manner. I think the team, uh, the entire economic development team has done a fantastic job with this and should really be commended. Um, so um we do absolutely understand that we can't make everyone happy a hundred percent of the time. Um, but the team has been very responsive in addressing uh the issues raised by the community and will continue to do so as we implement this if it goes forward.
Any other discussion? Well, uh, I feel the need to disclose that I uh will have a personal conflict. I have started working on the weekends at Hamilton Bar, which I believe is one of the restaurants that has outdoor dining. So I will abstain from this vote just out of an abundance, abundance of caution, the appearance of conflict. Um, so, but I am happy to call the roll if people are uh willing to vote on this. Okay, uh, so I will move. Let me just get it. I will move um approval of the twenty twenty-three outdoor dining program regulations and fees as presented by our Economic Development Director, Meredith Mooney. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And the chair abstains. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Moving along to fire department promotions. I believe our fire chief is here. Chief Sullivan, thank you so much for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, uh, tonight I um come before you with the first step in the process. Um, we have confirmed the resignation of Captain Owen Thompson uh from the Brookline Fire Department effective on the nineteenth of September. Um, we are very pleased uh for Captain Thompson to announce that he was named the Chief of Department uh for the Middle Borough Fire Department. Uh, and uh we wish him, you know, nothing but the best after twenty years here uh in uh in Brookline. He uh has the opportunity to to lead that department uh and uh we're really happy for him. Um, and we wish him nothing but the best in his future endeavors. Um, as a result of that, uh however, uh we now have a vacancy in the position of captain, uh which when promoted, I would create a vacancy in the position of lieutenant. Uh, and so I'm before you tonight, seeking authorization uh to um fill those two positions uh that have been created by the resignation of Captain Thompson.
Any questions for the chief? Seeing none, thank you so much for uh wishing a a long-serving employee well and preparing them to take on the challenge of leading another community. So at this time, I will move approval of uh the request to promote within the fire department to uh two positions that the chief just described. All those in favor? Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you so much, and I think we'll be seeing you a little later tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Warrant articles, public hearing. Oh, actually, speaking of it, chief?
Not going.
Yeah. Um, so warrant article four is about the fire station renovations. This has been kind of a moving target uh for lack of a better term. Uh, why don't you update us on what the project is and uh and I guess the controversy over the uh how much it's going to cost?
Um, well, thank you, um, Chair. Um, I I I don't know that I would categorize it as a controversy, this uh controversy necessarily.
Just that there there are kind of two different numbers being floated and why, why you're um backing one number.
So uh I I sent over to all of you um a memo that I prepared for the advisory committee. Uh, and subsequently, um, select board member Van Skoyak uh had a couple of follow-up questions, which I hope that you've all uh been able to uh read and and take in. Um, essentially, uh back right after I got here uh in two thousand and eighteen, it became abundantly clear that the condition of living conditions of our firefighters uh were uh far less than what we would hope uh for our employees. Um, there has been substantial research done uh about the health and wellness of of firefighters being related to uh their uh continued exposure to uh toxins and cancer carcinogens, uh which in large part, in in many cases, come from the exposures that we get within the living quarters. Uh, our fire stations uh have an average age of ninety-five and a half years old. Uh, we've gotten a great service life out of the uh the stations that we have. Uh, some of them are very iconic uh and part make up the landscape of Brookline. Uh, and as such, we, you know, we we cherish them and we want to make them. Um, you know, we want to preserve them. At the same time, we want to be able to uh make this the living situations for our firefighters. Uh, you know, one that is safe and healthy. Uh, you know, one that is safe and healthy. Uh, those were the goals originally for this project. Were, were to minimize the occupational health risks of all of our employees. Uh, in those stations and provide a safe and working uh, uh, working space in conformity with all state and local laws. Uh, including uh the new safety standards uh when the state moved to a um more of a federalized OSHA standard. Um, I went around to all the stations with the town administrator at the time and uh. You know, we were, we were struck by the many uh things that we would not. Put up within our own homes uh, uh, that we ask our employees to uh, to do. So as a result of that, uh, we worked with uh Charlie Simmons in the Buildings Department as well as Melissa. And, and finance and uh, we're able to identify existing CIP funds that we could engage GGD consulting. Uh, to do a survey uh of the code um requirements and as well as to give us a. An estimated project cost to address the issues that we need. One of the reasons that we chose GGD consulting is because we have a longstanding history of using them for many projects in town. Uh, and they are an established uh, uh, authority uh for um, the, the, oh, well, they, they're an established vendor for the town. Uh, where we had very great success. Also, uh, they have been employed by many of our municipal partners around the greater Boston area. Uh, to do the exact same thing for them uh for their aging infrastructure and fire stations. So. They have, you know, some historical knowledge of uh what it is that we're looking for in terms of the environmental zoning. Uh, in order to keep the toxins from moving from uh the, the apparatus floor, the bay where we keep the. Uh, the gear and the trucks into those living spaces. Um, they also have the expertise to be able to look at uh the state federal uh laws and, and work with environmental. Um, and code enforcement folks in order to be able to meet those standards. And so in uh early of uh two, uh, two thousand and nineteen, we engaged with them uh and uh they were able to give us. Um, an original estimate somewhere uh just around eight million dollars just to do that part of it. Um, at during that timeframe, uh, we had. We had put a committee together between management and uh the local uh nine fifty IFF. As well as with uh the other stakeholders uh in town departments. Uh, and one of the things that came to the forefront that absolutely needed to be addressed. Uh, and I thanks, thanks to Patty Kreip and the other female firefighters that uh we uh, you know, we really. Um, you know, we really uh are, are indebted to. Um. They identified to the leadership that, you know, we really need to address the gender inequality issues that our fire stations. Uh, present to all of our female firefighters. We've had female firefighters now in the town of Brookline uh for over thirty years. Uh, but have never really addressed the fact that our ninety-five-plus-year-old stations, for the most part, uh, never. Never anticipated female firefighters to be part of that. That uh occupational uh, uh, environment. And uh, we, we tried when uh we first uh got uh female firefighters uh on the job to. Kind of accommodate as best as we could. Uh, and uh, the, the thinking at the time. Uh, was, oh, okay, we'll take some spaces and we'll kind of make some uh, you know, segregated spaces for them, which. In the long run, uh, created another problem because now you're segregating uh and uh that, that was. An inadequate uh use of the space and it really wasn't equitable. Um. And, and in, in one case, in our Station Five case, you, you really couldn't do anything to, to make it really work. Uh, so uh, for a long time, we have just not assigned. Female firefighters to Engine Five and, and, and Station Five because it's just a, an incredibly difficult place uh to be able to uh work with gender equality. Uh, and so um, that's unfair. That is, that is inherently um biased and, and, and is, is unfair to our, our female firefighters. So we took that on as the third pillar, if you will, of this project to say that we, we really want to address these things. While we're doing these renovations to the stations, we can also work in um, these, these uh gender equity issues. And as such. Um, the, the design that GGD came up with was that all of our bathroom facilities and we're adding actually additional bathroom facilities. Would be a gender-neutral kind of uh pod, uh, which is the uh. The, the next generation, if you will, of uh how uh fire stations are being designed. Where there would be an individual space which would have a changing area, a shower, a sink, uh, and. Um, a, a private space and it would be gender new. So each, each firefighter would. Have that space for their, for, for themselves. Uh, and it wouldn't matter if it was a, a female firefighter. Uh, or, or whatever orientation they had. So um, that was part of the project and the other was that we're actually going. Back in time, if you will, back in the, in the olden days of the fire stations, you had open bunk rooms and everybody slept in the same bunk room except the officers. Uh, and then we kind of started pulling these spaces apart and, and making divisions. Uh, and in securing individual uh sleeping areas. Well. There's inequity in that as well because you can't, you can't make it equitable. So we're actually going back to the concept of open sleeping areas with dividers. Uh, and everybody, everybody has the same opportunity. So. There's a number of different things that are also involved in that environmental zoning, being able to utilize uh negative and positive pressures so that the carcinogens don't go in and out. Uh, from the spaces that uh are quote-unquote dirty to the living spaces, which are, which are not. Uh, which we try to keep in the green. Uh, and then um also uh those, those uh areas of um. Uh, I just lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. Uh, but anyway, you, you get the gist of it. Um, it, it, it expanded the project scope. So we went back to G E G, GGD in October of, of uh two thou- two thousand uh nineteen and said. Please look at this. Come back with a redesign so that we can uh address these gender inequality issues. Um. Right about that same time in November of two thousand and nineteen, uh, Warren Article passed, Warren Article twenty-one on the prohibition of fossil fuels. Uh, so we actually had to, and, and it was specifically targeted um. Uh, w- with regard to any major renovations or um construction for town um facilities. Uh, so we, we had to again call GGD and say, okay, uh, a little bit of a change of plan. You're already working with the heating and, and ventilation systems. Now we need to make everything that we have fossil fuel free, uh, which it, it further extended um the, the scope of this particular. Project. Uh, so uh, at that point, um. They, they did a reassessment uh and they came back to the group and said. Hey, here's what the cost would be, but we, we also have another proposal for you. Um, we don't believe that it would be in your best interest in terms of the money that you would be spending. On the Babcock Street Station, Station Five uh to do rehab. Uh, you're not going to get what you, what you, what you're seeking uh, uh, from this building. The building just does not. Uh, comport itself to be able to do what you're asking it to do. Uh, we think that you would be better served to um build a new station. Uh, either as a replacement to Station Five, if you're going to spend uh six, six million dollars or seven million dollars at the time in a rehab. Uh, you're really better served for the long-term um benefit of the town. Uh, to go and go to a, a rebuild project, which at the time was about sixteen million dollars. Um, and so we brought that to the AC, we brought that to this board and said, here's the re, here's the consideration. Uh, we would like to give consideration to only four rehab projects and one rebuild. And that was taken under uh advisement by the Advisory Board Public Safety Subcommittee and subsequently voted out in the affirmative. Um. To add another wrinkle to the, to the, uh, to the mix, um. The, the idea of net zero came in. Uh, how do we make these stations doing what we're doing? Uh, as ready to net zero as possible, meaning uh, we, we do the envelopes and we view the HVAC systems. Uh, in the new system such that they are as energy efficient as possible. Uh, and then we'd look for the, the, the guidance of the town uh to be able to realize savings. Uh, in other areas in order to offset the costs of, of what we would be expending. Uh, in, in energy costs for these um, for these buildings. That's where we came to in early two thousand and twenty-two. Um, when things got stalled during the pandemic, we got kind of pushed back on all of this. We got. Uh, you know, we were told, yeah, we, 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 the budget is uncertain. Economics are uncertain. We, we need to put this all on hold. We had the Driscoll School, we had the high school, we had all of these other uh major projects and we were asked to. Wait in line, wait our turn, so to speak, to afford to go to the voters. Um, by the time we came back in early twenty twenty-two uh with all of that. Uh, the estimate was sixty, uh, fifty million uh for everything, soup to nuts with all, everything. Uh, minus the net zero, but if we wanted to get the net zero readiness, uh, it was a sixty million dollar project. We all know what's happened with the economy uh and supply chain since January to now. Uh, so we asked GGD to go back and give us an updated. Uh, one of the concerns that came up at EC was, are you giving enough percentage uh for the future? Uh, in terms of the, the inflationary percent. So they came back and they escalated the inflationary percentage from five percent to eight percent. Uh, and that's where we stand now at sixty-five million uh for the total project. Uh, with a five, with that five percent or, or five to eight percent inflationary uh addition. Um, so uh, we're, we're trying to stay on scope. There has been some uh. Some talk along the way about electric vehicles and could we incorporate um into this infrastructure plan? Um, the, the concept of potentially in the future elec- electrification of the fleet. Um, I, I, I am committed to working with the ZAB Committee and, and those folks uh into the future. Um, but it is really outside the scope of this project. It is not ready for us to bring to the voters in November and this board has already voted uh to be able to put this before the ballot. Uh, in November and um, I, I respectfully say that, you know, that's a bigger. That's a bigger fish to fry, that's a bigger envelope for us to open, uh, and that should be done in concert with an entire town. Um, pro- plan and project for electrification of, of the vehicle fleet, uh, which would. Would really allow us to get federal, state and other funding and it wouldn't be part of a debt exclusion. Um, a, a, you know, override for the, for the town or residents. And so. We're not ready for that yet necessarily. It would be a parallel project and it wouldn't be. Uh, this is, this is a five-to-seven-year project, so there is time uh to um. Really study and incorporate the electric vehicle question into it. Uh, it's just not ready for, for this uh debt exclusion at this time. So. I respectfully am asking you, as I did the AC Committee, to vote um to support the sixty-five million dollar number as opposed to the. Truly guestimate of another eighteen million for potentially the uh electric vehicle. It's not based on any real study or data at all. Uh, it's, it was. The manufacturer said, now you can, you can count on about three times as much as what the vehicle costs and that's the number we use to. You know, to, to get there and it costs about one point two million dollars for an electric fire truck today, which. Everyone should know is not fully electric. It still has a diesel generator inside of it. Um, and, and it is uh. One point two million with about a two-year wait time uh to get one. Uh, and so three times that was about three point six times the five stations brought us up to another eighteen million. So that's not ready for us yet, but we, we, we're, we're still willing and able to work with uh the. Um, you know, the town and uh what they want. We, we've got two climate action, actions in there. Uh, with the fossil fuel free and the net zero capacity. Uh, so uh, we're doing our best to, to meet the mandates of the. Uh, the, the town and the town meeting members. Um, the EV thing will come eventually, so.
Thank you very much, Chief. Uh, Mike Salmon.
Uh, thanks, uh, Chief. Uh, the one thing I, I appreciate the uh, the, the advice that it doesn't make sense to. Um, at this stage to incorporate uh a number that is still very much in flux. And uh, but I, I would like to ask whether. Uh, you're planning to bring in uh at least the necessary wiring. Uh, to support recharge or charging uh vehicles when you do get them. Um, I'm, I'm familiar with the, with this from the perspective of bringing. Additional amperage into a condominium building that's, that's already been constructed. Uh, that was a much more expensive process than it would have been to build, to bring the uh. Uh, the wiring in, in the first place when it was built, although it was built nineteen twenty-two, so we weren't thinking about that.
Right. And, and thank you, um, Mike, for the question. Um, we don't anticipate. Um, with the scope of the rehabs to be doing any major upgrades to the electric. Electrical services for the, the four stations. Uh, we certainly uh will in, in the uh Station Five rebuild. Uh, and we have committed to uh making sure that uh the capacity of the conduits coming into that station. Would be such that it would support uh the electric vehicles. Oh, we, we already have uh engineers. Uh, on the schedule to come in from our manufacturers and their uh subcontractors to come into the town to really. Dig into that study to see what it would actually mean in terms of the amperage and uh transformers and uh. You know, uh, and subsequently uh the size of the generators that we would need to not only. Uh, support the station's fossil fuel free with all-electric appliances and lights and so on and so forth. Uh, in heating uh and air conditioning systems. Um, but then on top of that. The DC current that would be needed to do the fast charging stations for uh these big trucks. And so. Um, you know, those, those are all part of the, the conceptual and, and realistic design that needs to go forward. Uh, and we will definitely be incorporating uh the elements that we can for the infrastructure for Station Five. Cause that makes sense, cause we're, we're building a brand-new building. Um, the others would, you know, subsequently be. Uh, part of that, that anticipated project in the future.
Right, but I, I'm not suggesting that you uh bring uh four forty uh into the, into the buildings down. That typically requires a, a little substation or transformer.
Correct.
Uh, in the first place, but um, the conduit is a relatively straightforward thing to bring in.
Right.
Uh, so that you can get the necessary power from the street.
Right.
Uh, to whatever you're doing. And if you can incorporate that into even into the renovations, I think that would be. A significant savings and maybe speed things up down the road.
I, and, and I will speak to the engineers uh about that. Um, I don't. I don't anticipate that we're going to be doing any site work like that, so that would be additional site work. And I don't know that it really saves us anything right now to do that now. Uh, as it would with Station Five, because we would be doing utility site work for Station Five, but I'll certainly ask the engineers to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Yes, uh, thank you, Heather. Thank you, Chief. Um, and. Thank you very much for the thoroughness of the presentation. Um, this is, as you will uh concede, I'm sure. There, there's a lot to this. I mean, we're talking about five stations, we're talking about. You know, a, a variety of changes to some of the stations. We're talking about a complete rebuild of one of the stations. Um, so uh, uh, everybody should understand that um. This, this has been a lot to sort of sum up in one document and in one presentation, but I think the chief has done a terrific job. Um, I, I would, however, um, just, just so that there's clarity in all of this. I, I just wonder if we could go over some language from the warrant article as submitted. Um, which concludes with the statement, any new fire station and the entirety of each renovated. Fire station will be designed and constructed to be a highly energy-efficient building. That is consistent with the fossil fuel-free construction policy or practice established by the select board. Is what you have described here tonight consistent with that language?
Uh, the, the, the warrant article that was um presented back in twenty twenty-one. As well as the AG's new uh legislation in her um determination about our Warren article. In that uh, you know, she didn't, she, she, she shot down our Warren article but said, it's not. It's not that you can't do it, it's that you need to do it a certain way. Uh, and now there is legislation at the state level. Um, for fossil fuel-free uh legislation that I know Brookline is, is standing at the forefront of trying to be part of that uh process. So uh, GGD uh has all of that language. Uh, they know what it is that the town is looking for. They know what it is that uh, um, those legislative uh pieces are, are. I, I can't address it to you with any great, you know, capacity as a uh, as an engineer. Uh, but I, I assure you that they, they know what it is that we're, we're, we're trying to accomplish and that is in the design concept. Okay. To the extent that we can do it with a hundred-plus-year-old station. Uh, and that's where the offset would have to be. And, and that would come from another, the part of the town policy on how to do offsets for all of our, all of our usage, not just the fire stations, but all of our usage. Whether that's plantings, whether that's a solar arrays or wind or whatever, whatever piece of that we would, we would be utilizing pieces, we would be utilizing to offset to, to reach that net zero capacity.
Heather, may I ask one more question?
Yes.
So the spreadsheet, I'm going to call it a spreadsheet. It's kind of a table, actually, but I think you know what I mean, that was provided, all buildings combined, twenty twenty-two new station, et cetera. There, there's a, there's a table of figures that adds up to forty-nine million, nine hundred thousand, so let's say fifteen million. And it's just labeled grand total. And then there's a separate table that says total including net zero ready scope. And it, it's fifty-nine million. But I don't see sixty-five million there. So I'm just, can you, can you give us some enlightenment on that?
So I, I also sent to you, along with that PDF, there was an EXO file as well, which is what we asked for just a few weeks ago to, to give the inflationary adjustment after meeting with the select board in the Public Safety Subcommittee and the Capital Subcommittee. They were concerned that our inflationary numbers were not sufficient to meet the actual state where, where we're in right now in our, our economy. And so we went back to GGD and we asked them to reconfigure a reasonable number for an inflationary cost, which was approximately four point, I don't have the page right in front of me, but for another four point six million for the additional inflationary costs projecting out over the course of this, you know, five, six, seven year project. But also had some ancillary pieces in there, like some inflationary costs for temporary housing of Station Five while we're, you know, while we're rebuilding the building. So Engine Five will stay in the district in a temporary shelter for the time that the building is being demolished and rebuilt. And obviously that number needed to increase as well. And they have, they're using their comparables from Cambridge where they did the exact same thing recently in order to be able to rehab the station and rebuild the station over again. So, you know, these folks, they know, they know from which they speak, they know the climate and they know the metro Boston area, and they're using some very conservative numbers. They're, they're not, they're, they're being very conservative. So they're, they're taking a number and they're saying, we're not going to try to lowball this. We're telling you what we think is, is the price that this is going to be. And so that's where the additional five million dollars comes in.
And if I may, just one quick, short one here. The, the table with the, the net zero component is labeled total including net zero ready scope. And it just leaves me with the question, is net zero ready the same thing as net zero?
No, no, because you, you need to do the offsets to reach net zero. And there's no way in a fire station that you can put enough solar arrays on the building to be able to offset the cost. So this is creating the, the, the existing building as energy efficient as it possibly can be, given the fact that these are ninety-plus year old buildings. In a lot of cases, it, it has a lot to do with the, the envelope and the heating and air conditioning systems and how, and, and using geothermal and, and, and other opportunities that you can, if the site allows you to do so. You'll notice that on that table under Station One, it says existing site may not allow for geothermal. Just because the footprint of Station One and where it is in the village, there's just no place to drill. There's no place to put it, you know, so you, you would be going straight to, straight electric and, and no, no alternative energy sources, which is going to, which is going to cost you in the terms of reaching that net zero. If it was straight geothermal, that number would come down and it would be, it would be something that you'd be able to do. So the town still would have some work to do, so to speak, to reach truly net zero. We would have to, we would have to plant trees in order to, you know, get some numbers. We would have to be bought into solar arrays and, and wind turbine cooperatives and so on and so forth and able to, to really reach that. But it's just making the building as efficient as it can be so that net zero number is, is small.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions by select board members? Chief, thank you so much for being able to answer those questions.
I'm surprised.
Yeah, we, we pay you to put out fires and manage a fair, you know, one of our larger departments. And now you're moonlighting as a, as a climate specialist. So I really appreciate it.
I would like to thank Tom Barasso and, and, and his group, as well as Kara and Planning for really cooperating with this on a number of the different areas here to be able to come up with this. And especially the Buildings Department, Charlie Simmons, for all of his help as well to see this to this point. And, you know, we're, we're, we're really excited to get a shovel in the ground and we're really hopeful that the voters see it in their hearts to be able to really make the, the living, the living situation for our firefighters, one that's healthy, safe and equitable.
I'm about to open it up to public comment because this is a public hearing, so please notify Devon if you want to be heard. I will just share, I was invited to take a tour of Station One down in the village a few years back now, when I was newly elected, and that quite a number of the female firefighters, and I was just so impressed when I met, I think, the youngest one at the time. And she said, you know, I want to, I want to bunk with my, with my colleagues, like I don't want a separate space. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of this project. I think it, it, there are a number of things that it needs to address. And having our firefighters really feel like comrades in the deepest, truest sense of that, that word, I think is one of the, one of the things that they, they've wanted for a long time. John Bowman.
Thank you, John Bowman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten. I think I understand the scope of the project based on your explanations, Chief. I have a fairly simple question, and that is what does a yes vote mean on this Warren article specifically?
Through the chair to Mr. Bowman. Eventually, it will mean, well, actually, the debt exclusion vote will go to the voters before it goes to town meeting. So you already know what the voters, it's on, it's on the November election. So it will be your authorization to, to bond, to, to bond the debt exclusion in, in the, in the future. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be borrowing, and Melissa's probably the best person to answer this than me, but we wouldn't be borrowing the money all at once. In fact, we, we, we envision that the Public Safety Building Authority will be authorized by the State Senate and, and the, the House. And we would be able to look to funding from the state to offset some of the costs here and in the future. So it is, Melissa, help me out here. It's a, the, the vote on the, on the Warren article authorizes the, the town to, to go forward with the bonding, the debt exclusion and the bonding, I think, I think.
Yes, you're correct. So essentially, this is the appropriation article. The vote will occur in November. If that vote is successful, then Town Meeting would be able to, that the vote would provide the funding for us to raise the levy to pay for the bonds that we need to fund the project. And so that is what this, this article is looking to do, is to provide an appropriation to support the project.
So it's a very nuanced thing, and I actually just got educated on this by Melissa, I think, yesterday. So the, the voters vote to authorize us to be able to bond this against the, the levy. So they're, they're essentially okaying their taxes to go up. But then Town Meeting, because it's a bonding question, has to approve that authorization to actually execute the bonds. So it's so nuanced.
So the dollar amount is, is set with the debt exclusion.
Well, funny enough, the, sorry, Melissa, the, the, the voters don't actually see the number. We don't put the number before voters. It's so counterintuitive. But the state has a formula for these types of debt exclusion. We do our best, as Carla Benka brought up in the public comment, to educate the voters on what that number is going to be, but there is no actual number on the ballot. But then there will be a number before Town Meeting.
So when we filed the, oh, sorry, when, when we filed the Warren article, the Warren article didn't have a dollar amount on it because the chief was still getting final estimates in. By the time Town Meeting makes the motion, we'll have, we'll have that. The motion in front of the board tonight will be for the chief's number, which is sixty-five million dollars. And that's the same amount that the advisory committee voted last week.
So the, there will be an amended Warren article that has an amount.
The article gets converted into the motion and the motion will have a dollar amount on it, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Bernard, did you want to say something?
No, you, you actually clarified. I just wanted to make sure that people knew that while the ballot won't have a number, we're not hiding the number from people. It will be part of, you know, the campaign, it'll be part of, you know, everything that we do.
And we do our best, as in every debt exclusion, to put forward information that is, you know, numbers based. But I, I, other board members may feel differently, but trying to educate every single voter, we will make it available on our website. I, I support a calculator. But we're, we're not going to be sending mailers to everybody's home. Any other public comment? I think that's a, a reflection on how good the presentation was. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you all for your support. I really appreciate it and I appreciate your comments and your questions, you know, because the more we, we get the information out, the more educated the voters will be and hopefully the more excited they'll be for funding this project. So thank you very much.
Thank you so, so much. I will close this public hearing and we will probably vote at a later time. Bernard, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just wondering what type of public, our public discussion are we going to have about the, the need for these renovations and the new firehouse? I mean, Chief Sullivan's description of the need is quite compelling. And I just hope that we can make sure that the voters know what that compelling reason for this, this bond issue is.
So there, there's a, there's a group that has come together to support this project. I personally can't go out and say you need to support this project. It's not within my purview to be able to do that. I can only present the facts and say this is what the need is. I, I can't solicit votes, but supporters can. And, you know, there, there, there will be an opportunity for folks at all levels between now and the town meeting through the various listservs and, and meetings that representatives who support this will be out, you know, drumming up the drumbeat, if you will.
And, you know, it's, it's such a fine line. We're in a very unique position because we are elected, so we are allowed to campaign. That being said, you're not allowed to campaign with your Brookline email address, right? So you can talk up, you know, that we need this at any of our board meetings. You can use your First Amendment right to, to talk about it to anyone who will listen. But using a, using the public resources to campaign is a big no-no, and it, it's such a fine line as you hold office. Our employees are really prohibited from campaigning. So we would really have to talk through what that would look like. What it's looked like in past debt exclusions is that there is a independent campaign with co-chairs and, and organization. Getting back to Carla's point in the beginning, you know, now, I, I really have gotten so cynical in my five plus years on the board. When I hear the word impartial, I laugh because there really is no such thing. You think you're being impartial and then somebody always disagrees that that is not as impartial as you claim it to be. So we have to be very, very conservative with what we do to put our finger on the scale. There are two ways that I think we signal to, to voters that we support this project. One, we're putting it before them. But you could also make the argument that we're putting it before voters because we don't know what to do and we need voters to tell us. So, John, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I think there is a distinction to be drawn, which might be helpful, because I'm thinking that there's people listening and they're, some of them might be wondering, wait a minute, don't I remember that when the town, you know, had the question on the ballot of buying Newberry site? There were some people from the Select Board on a committee, the campaign, yeah, there were. You, you know, it, it's the way, the way to go about this is for there to be an independent committee formed, you know, which is a yes on whatever or a no on whatever. And select board members individually, you know, are free to be a part of an independently formed and fundraised effort, but not spend town funds and not like go to select board meetings and spend all of their time, you know, in, in, you know, basically advocating for the, the position of the, the yes committee or the no committee. I think that's the distinction. And if anybody else on the board wants to correct me, please do. But I, I, I know that I have been involved, Bernard's been involved, Heather, I think you've been involved. Yeah, we've all been involved in committees that were independently formed and that independently fundraised on behalf of certain questions. That might happen again. I don't know for sure.
Bernard?
Yeah, I just want to make clear that I wasn't asking Chief Sullivan to tell me anything, but rather using my First Amendment rights here on the Select Board to say, does anyone know about a committee that's organized to, 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 to tell the community the importance of this, of this bond issue? Because as we hear every day on TV, the election is five weeks away. And, you know, we're, we're running out of time. So I, I just hope that, you know, that there is a robust campaign to educate the pop, the public. And, you know, and the public can decide whether they think that, you know, we ought to have equitable, equitable facilities for men and women. Hopefully they'll, they'll see the, the, you know, justice of, of voting yes. But, you know, someone has to get out the information to them.
Thank you so much, Chief. That was the conclusion of our public hearing on this. And since we don't have Miriam, I am a little reticent to vote on this. I really want a full select board. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving on to, I think, Warren Article eleven. Speaking of select board members who have been co-chairs of debt, debt exclusions in the past, Nancy might have the record.
Yeah.
You're not on, I haven't turned on my video. Sorry about that.
No worries. Welcome back.
It's nice to see you all and nice to see the new town administrator. So, and Melissa and Devon and Kate. So we're here to talk about eleven and twelve, I believe.
Yes.
I'll start with eleven. They, they do overlap somewhat. I'll start with eleven. Uh, they they do overlap somewhat uh in the sense of of purpose. But they go, there are different mechanisms by which they uh propose. To extend the demolition delay. Let's talk about eleven. Should temporarily extend. The demolition delay period in the general bylaw. Um, for buildings found significant by the Preservation Commission. And then extend a twenty-four month window for discussions and actions regarding the impact of teardowns. Especially in Brookline's two and three family neighborhoods, because that seems to be where most of them are occurring, although not all by any means. And I'll get into how the mechanism works in a little bit, but warrant article twelve is a zoning moratorium. Temporary again, which would apply, it's differences that would apply to all residential properties in the town. The same purpose as eleven, but eleven only hits the significant buildings that preservation deems significant. Um, now, we know that neighbors across Brookline have noticed the increased level of demolitions. And and one of the things that we know is that a survey conducted in the course of preparing. The twenty twenty-two housing production plan. Asked the eight hundred plus participants what Brookline's priority housing initiatives initiatives should be. And we're told, and we're, and the box that was checked was encourage preservation of existing homes. That was listed more than any other response. The public concerns about demolitions is increasing, and according to that same report. Uh, the HPP survey, the most notable change is increased support. For encourage the preservation of existing homes between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-two. Twenty sixteen was the prior HPP. Um, now, before we get into the meat, I want to tell you that we are working on data gathering, but it's turning out to be a complex project. While that process, so the process isn't complete, but we do know that full demolitions have increased in the range of forty to forty-five percent. Over what was happening ten years ago. So we're sorry that we don't have our investigation of the data complete. And sorted, uh, it's just not ready for time, prime time at that this point. But we welcome any questions that you have, or any data you would like to have, and it may be that such data doesn't exist. But we will try to investigate data for all the questions asked. Um, so let me go into the reasons why we have proposed um these articles. Demolitions eliminate, and they're no, in no particular order or preference, demolitions eliminate moderately priced rental housing. And replace it with much more expensive luxury condominiums. We have ample anecdotal evidence of this. And we're working to sort out the data. Again, that's one of the things that we're having a difficult time quantifying. Demolitions, demolition, demolition of existing buildings and erecting new ones harms. The climate and the environment. Demolition and construction are highly carbon in intensive activities that generate greenhouse gases. One of the biggest problems is embodied carbon. That is, the carbon that was expended in the extraction, production, transportation of materials, fabrication, and demolition of structures. The National Trust for Historic Preservation estimates that it takes ten to eighty years. For a new green building to recover the environmental cost of demolishing an existing one. So the greenest building can and should be the one that already exists. Sustainability means preserving and reusing existing buildings. And two architects who received the Pritzker uh award in two thousand and nineteen. And they did it not because of their new, their innovative designs, but because of the innovative way that they have preserved existing buildings. And they had said, and I quote, sustainability is to make things already existing last longer. A way, demolition is a waste of money, a waste of materials, and a waste of history. Um, demolitions often include removing all the trees on property. Contributing to climate problems since trees sequester carbon, therefore, therefore helping our efforts to reduce our carbon footprint. And reduce our tree canopy, which we are trying to increase for climate reasons, for reasons of beautification of our environment. Demolitions also lead to elimination of green space or open space as part of the community's sense of shared streetscape. Demolitions typically destroy buildings of neighborhood significance that contribute to the overall look, feel, and comfort. Of a coherent land, a streetscape. The current demolition delay bylaw of twelve months or eighteen months of the property is in a national registered district. Often fails to protect buildings from developers intent on maximizing profits. Who would in any case spend much of that time in the permitting process. Developers just wait out the delay. It's only a year. The building is demolished and the replacement is often designed in a regulatory framework, not structured. To meaningfully respond to community needs and values. The new buildings constructed after demolition, most often with the same number of units, are built to the maximum F A R. With garages, elevators, et cetera, tend to maximize footprints, increase paved areas. Maximize skyplane obstruction, destroy te- trees, and eliminate open space and green space. Often, the units are priced far above the means of lower and middle-class residents. Too often, demolition replaces buildings whose components, such as porches, bays, dormers. Create a friendly, welcoming streetscape, with flat, instead of flat wall, cold-ridden boxes. Presenting a street-level garage doors and skyplanes, roof lines lacking any articulation. So the question becomes, how would this article prevent demolitions? It would certainly delay them while the temp- it's the, while the temporary extension remains in effect. The purpose of the article is to temporarily provide the extension so that the town has some breathing room or time. We, in which to consider ways of reducing the number of residential building and demolitions, time to plan. Article eleven, however, could limit the number of demolitions in itself during this twenty-four hour, twenty-four um month period. Or produce better development outcomes while it is in effect. And there are several ways this could occur. First, a developer who is eager, eager. To um demolish a building and erect a new structure might be more motivated to negotiate. Some form of mitigation or preservation with the um, excuse me, my computer is screaming. They took it in, so I'm gonna do that before I lose you all, um. So it, so it would give the Preservation Commission a chance to negotiate with the developer. Um, so instead of the developer waiting out the twelve month, but they were faced with a twenty-four month delay. Uh, they might be willing to explore some development options that would preserve some or all of the existing structures. And in that case. They come to an agreement with the Preservation Commission, the stake could be lifted. Second, longer demolition stays would give neighborhood residents more time to work with the Preservation Commission to develop a local historic district. Which can be a very time-consuming process. And uh, the. That would pro- protect the structure from being demolished. Third, even if the neighborhood residents decided not to try to establish an L H D, the possibility that they may be able to do so. Also may give the Preservation Commission more leverage in any negotiations. And finally, a um, a longer demolition stay would provide more time for the developer and the Preservation Commission to explore all possible options. For preserving a structure. Having more time makes it possible to reach an agreement. Although intended as a temporary extension of Brookline's demolition delays, it also serves as a pilot program. For gathering information on whether long demolition delay period helps to limit the number of demolitions or improve any. Arrangements agreed upon by the Preservation Commission and developers. Now, article twelve, uh, let me say something about that. I assumed you wanted to have these bundled. If not, I'll happily wait until the end and.
No, I I think it's more efficient to bundle them. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Article twelve amends the zoning bylaw. So this is different from the other. Yeah, article eleven is a general bylaw. This is the zoning bylaw, which we don't have a moratorium in now. It imposes a temporary moratorium on demolition of residential buildings that are principal structures. And would be, that would be replaced by buildings with larger footprint. That moratorium would remain in effect until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Allowing time for the November twenty-third town meeting to amend the bylaws to increase incentives for preservation. And reduce incentives for demolition. And the the neither article would prevent all them demolitions. We're realistic about that. Article eleven only applies to buildings that are architecturally or historically significant. Article twelve applies to residential structures that would be torn down and replaced with a different footprint. So, um. Article twelve also includes exceptions for government-owned buildings and demolitions necessary to preserve public, public health or safety. And together, they would temporarily delay or prevent many demolitions in Brookline. Um, the article twelve also calls for the Department of Planning and Community Development. To study options for preserving existing buildings and reducing the incentives for demolition. Um, so we know other communities um who have enacted this type of demolition delay. Uh, and we've been working with town council's office uh as well to modify our language. And we know that Milton has a demolition delay bylaw that provides for demolition stays of twenty-four months. We also know that that Belmont has a two thousand and thirteen demolition moratorium. Like our zoning, like article twelve, approved by the Attorney General's Office. And that one was intent, was limited in duration, was intended to provide an opportunity for community planning. To reduce the number of demolitions, just as we would like to see. Um, so those are the um outlines of the two articles. Now, let me tell you. That the some, there's been some confusion as to how the twenty-four month period would be temporary and would work. And the best example I could give you is that we, let us suppose. Uh, this would not take effect until the Attorney General says, yes, it's good to go. So assuming that's February twenty-eighth, I'll just pick a date out of the hat. It's may not be that realistic, given that they've taken all the time. Um, in other situations, but twenty eighth of February. So on March first, a developer comes to, or someone comes to the. Uh, building department for a demolition permit, and it is denied. And that demolition permit. If the um Preservation Commission found that that uh, that building was s- significant. Would last for twenty-four months from March first of twenty twenty-three to March first of twenty twenty-five. However, if someone came into the building department a month later, on April first of twenty twenty-three. And applied for a demolition permit. That per- and and it was granted by the Preservation Commission. Because of the significance of the building. That would only last twenty-three months. So it's a descending number of months until it comes, comes around back to to the uh original. Pres- um demolition delay bylaw of um twelve months and eighteen months of its national star register. So I hope that kind of clears up the um, the timing of this and how it is temporary and how it would. That would would be um deployed, really. Um, so. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I believe Dennis DeWitt and uh Sean Lynn Jones are here. And uh, my co-petitioners, and they may wanna add uh something I forgot or didn't say, or could say, who could say better.
I I would prefer us to go to questions, because we have used pretty much all the time allotted for these two warrant article presentations. But they can certainly feel free to to try to answer any questions as they come up. Um, any questions from select board members about warrant article eleven and twelve?
Eleven and twelve.
Uh, John.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Nancy. Um. Uh, I I have a couple of questions. First of all, um. Uh, what are the, what are the various boards that are going to go with, go over this, that have the expertise? As to how our zoning, you know, bylaw um in our building codes and um. And also the laws of the Commonwealth, you know, um overlap and and say whether. We are straying into some kind of territory with with these proposals that is um. Perhaps, y- you know, either either has has implementation problems, has um maybe, maybe has um. Some sort of constitutional problems in terms of it being, you know, challengeable. What what boards are reviewing it to make sure that all of those bases are covered in in the review of this article?
Right, well, the uh. I'm sorry, were you finished?
No, I I just meant to say these articles, not this article, yeah.
Okay, and before you answer, Nancy, I'll I'll just say that we have Jonathan Simpson. Um, from Town Council's office that can also speak to this after Nancy is finished.
Been in touch with him on a regular basis. Um, so the uh. Advisory Committee at how land use and sustainability committee met um in, uh, earlier in. Uh, September, and um, we went through the process and the the commit, subcommittee voted favorable action. On article eleven and uh sent it to the advisory committee, and the advisory committee heard it as well. And we now have a uh twenty-two-one to two vote favorable action by the. Advisory committee on favor, on the article eleven. The other committees that are, we are winding our way through are the Planning Board and Zoning Bylaw Committee. Um, the um, the school committee intends to weigh in. Uh, the um Preservation Commission is holding our uh public hearings on this. So we have a number of places we're going and we're uh talking with uh various groups in town.
Thank you. Um, uh, and I was glad to hear Heather mention Jonathan Simpson's here. How about the planning department staff? And and I guess we're gonna hear from John, Jonathan, uh, as to legal staff.
You want me to address the planning board staff?
Yeah, yeah, has this been run by them?
We, yes, uh, we have had some, I, not, I, I think with Sean, and we had the conversations with um. With Cara, and she's here to say what she knows about it.
Yeah, let, let's, let's let them speak for themselves. So, uh, Cara or Jonathan, not sure which one of you wants to go first. Cara unmuted herself, so I'm gonna pick on her.
Uh, I actually think it would be helpful to start with um Jonathan to kind of discern some of the um. Legal discussions he's had, which I think are a little bit different between warrant article eleven and twelve, and then I'm happy to continue.
Great.
Thank you, Cara. Uh, so for the record, Jonathan Simpson, uh, Associate Town Counsel for the town of Brookline. Um, yeah, so I've been, uh, as as Nancy has said, I've been working with uh her and her team um. Since they, you know, these, these articles were were sort of being conceived uh before the warrant closed. Um, and I drafted a legal opinion on an earlier uh version of them, which I believe has been circulated to the board. Um, and uh, was at the subcommittee hearing where they took up articles eleven and twelve. And uh, in in terms of article eleven, I uh was sort of comforted by the idea that, you know, even though we are going to twenty-four months. We are not alone in going to four, in going to twenty-four months. Um, the town of Milton has a. Uh, just a twenty-four month demo delay period. It's not even time limited as as ours is. In addition, I I think the fact that it is time limited, um, quite frankly, limits our sort of exposure. If someone did attempt to challenge this legally, because it is claiming it was um somehow, you know. Was an improper uh assertion of rights over private property or anything like that, which I don't think it is, because of course it is just an extension of what we already. Do. So warrant article eleven with a few tweaks that um, I know that that Dennis made. Um, and that the plan to land you subcommittee advanced to the full committee. Um, I I think is, I I do not have a uh legal, I do not legally concern me uh anymore. Uh, warrant article, do you want me to stop there? Or should I also speak to warrant article twelve?
Let's do twelve as well.
Okay, so warrant article twelve, um, and I apologize, I, due to a miscommunication, I I did miss the presentation, so I just just jumped on. Um, so I didn't, and as far as I know, uh, and I've been tripped up on this already this town meeting season, as far as I know. Um, warrant article twelve um is, does have some issues of of legal concern. The last draft I reviewed. Um, and then I had a discussion with Sean about, um, you know, potential, potential changes that might be made. But um, but I think that. But um, but I think that there's sort of, there, there's several larger legal issues that I think exist with, with the proposed moratorium that even, that um, changes in language don't really, um, couldn't, can't really address. Um, I have a, a sort of baseline legal concern with addressing uh, demolition, exclusively demolition through zoning. Um, that is an, that is a, to me, an open legal question about whether a, a town has the power to um, effectively block demolitions solely through the powers it uses in, in forty A, and that's what this would be, because it's, it's using our zoning by law. Um, the, the petitioners did forward a Belmont um, Attorney General decision on a Belmont moratorium that applied to demolition permits, but it also applied to building permits. And to me, that is a critical distinction that is not present here. Um, I certainly agree that moratoriums can be applied to building permits. I think that's a widely used uh, strategy around the Commonwealth um, to put moratorium on permits that are sort of legitimately um, the subject of the, of the zoning by law. Um, or other, you know, other, um, you can do more times on other things. There's, there's a lot of, there was many multiple moratoriums on, with licensing when the marijuana retailers were coming online, for example. But that again, there was no question that you had the power to regulate them in the first place. I just think that this is, this is an ill fitting solution. Uh, so I have a legal concern there about, because this does not bring in the building permits as well, I think that legal concern is accentuated. So I, I've expressed that to the petitioners. Um, but more and more, even more fundamental than that, I think everything you read about what you need, what a moratorium is supposed to be used for is to give a community time to plan, to sort of plan and reach a, reach a, reach a goal. You know, we, we, we need some time to do something. And um, I was just emailing with a citizen in Littleton, for example, I'm sure you've all seen the news where Littleton is dealing with this, you know, sort of horrified realization that they have this sort of gun market in the middle of town. And she, and this citizen had reached out to me saying, our Board of Selectmen are scrambling to get a bylaw together, but it's not gonna happen for six months. Is there a way to get a moratorium in place? I only bring that up to say like, that's the, that's where a moratorium is a good fit. You're already doing something and it will, you will be, the community will benefit from just locking things down while you're doing something. That something is, I have not been shown what the something is here. Um, the petitioners have said a number of reasons why a moratorium could benefit these neighborhoods that are facing demolitions. And I think that is, the, the, the issues they raise um, as citizens, as, as members of those neighborhoods, as people concerned with historic preservation are certainly valid. But there's no planning, there's nothing hap, there's nothing, there's nothing that's gonna be happening as far as I know during the moratorium, it's just a stop, we're just stopping for twenty four months or twelve months, or however you wanna, to view it. Um, and you know, I think particularly the allusions to the, the new MBTA Communities Act is um, one that I'm, I'm having particular trouble with, because, you know, yes, the town is engaged in a planning process for how to, how to handle section three A, the new MBTA Communities Act. But I don't think a moratorium on demolitions while we're doing that um, makes sense to me, because that means, the work we're doing there is how are we going to address this clear requirement that we allow for denser housing in these commu, in, in our communities near transit. And a dem, a demolition delay, more, a demolition moratorium, I think cuts directly against that. It seems to be pulling in the opposite direction, because we're saying, you can't get any denser, we're going to stop you from getting denser in the interim. That, um, so I think that there's, there's a real question of whether or not, if we did impose a moratorium, what we're doing, what's the, what's the planning purpose behind it? Because we can't point to something that we're doing. Um, I don't think it's appropriate to put in a moratorium and then figure out what you're going to do during the year. I think you need to do it in the other order, you need to figure out what you need, what you're doing in the year and then put in a moratorium. So those are my two sort of, the larger issues. I'd also flagged, um, and this is where I, I apologize if there's a more recent version floating around that I haven't seen. Um, the, uh, when they were, they originally sent a draft to review by Town Council Kalanen um, while I was on vacation, and he, you know, said at the time that, you know, you need, you have an undefined term demolition in your, in your bylaw. And I agree with him there that it's, as you almost certainly have bumped into in the past, uh, the, the demolition can mean a lot of things. And Joe was suggested that they bring in the demolition, that this definition of demolition that we already have so that we know what it means. Unfortunately, I think that because that definition, that definition is quite broad and includes particularly demolitions that aren't full demolitions, there is some question about whether the petitioners want to amend their moratorium to apply not to all demolitions, which would involve things where a single wall was getting torn down or even just historically significant features were getting removed, chimneys, windows, that sort of thing. Um, and applied only to more complete demolitions. I know that, that, um, that's one of the things that, that Sean and I had been, had been discussing. And then there is, um, I do have a concern that there's some question, uh, there, what they're, what they're trying to apply it to with respect to changes in the building's footprint. Um, along with replacements, I think both I, I was, I have, I have yet to hear sort of an answer of, of what the threshold for when when a demolition moratorium is supposed to apply, given those somewhat ambiguous terms. And to me, uh, that there is a sort of a question of, okay, so if it's only when you tear down the building, um, if you did intend to apply, apply it only to complete demolitions, and I, and I, I'm not sure that they intend to, but, but I, I know that's certainly been something that has been suggested to the petitioners. And, and also, you know, one, the, the thing that they point at in their explanation as well as their presentations, if you only have it applied to complete definitions, demolitions, does that mean that someone can get around it by keeping, say, some of the pre-existing structure, ripping down the rest and then building much bigger behind it or to the side of it or around it? Um, there's just some questions there and expanding the footprint, obviously, um, appears to you know, speak to making the building uh, bigger, but um, where, how that works with replacing it um, is, is a, is sort of an open question that I felt would, could be, stand to be cleared up. So those are, those are the legal issues I have raised with the petitioners with respect to warrant article twelve. Uh, and I fully intend to continue to uh, work with them. I'm going to the, for example, the Planning Board hearing next Wednesday, I'll be at the, when they go back before the subcommittee and so on. Thank you for your time, sorry if I went on a bit.
Thank you so much Jonathan, um, and I'll allow the petitioners to respond in case you uh, didn't have the latest. But we wanna hear from Kara, and I do see Mike Salmon with his hand up.
Do you want me to go now Heather?
Sure.
Okay, um, so, um, I will start by saying that the planning department um, can uh, support what Nancy is describing qualitatively. Our office does hear a lot of complaints about demolitions, um, especially in two and three family neighborhoods. Um, that is the, that is kind of the ground zero of where, um, our zoning as, as we believe that the zoning allows a floor area ratio, um, right now that is much higher than many of the structures, um, existing in those neighborhoods. And so, um, I just wanna first reflect and say, yes, you know, we are seeing, um, that, um, just panic of those neighborhoods, um, especially, again, especially the two and three family neighborhoods um, with increased demolitions and what's being replaced by them are not net new housing units, but simply larger units, um, replacing, you know, what, what were, were smaller units. Um, starting with article eleven, um, at least one of our preservation planners definitely feels very strongly that having an additional six months, um, say from eighteen months to twenty four months does make a difference if there is a particular property, um, where the Preservation, uh, Commission and staff feel like it's, it should be, um, go through study, you know, as quickly as we can in order to form a local historic district. And the example of that is that HH Richardson property that was, um, recently made, you know, national news. And, um, you know, that our staff and, and the community had to work very hard. And that was with a, uh, a property owner that was willing to work with us in order to get a local historic district established in time. So with respect to article eleven, having those additional six months, um, our preservation staff does believe could, could make a, a significant difference. Um, as Jonathan and Nancy mentioned, next week, we have the Preservation Commission taking up these articles, our Housing Advisory Board taking up these articles, Planning Board and our Zoning Bylaw Committee. Um, and so I, I'm not anticipating or taking any votes tonight, but I think having that discussion from all four of those boards will be really helpful for all of us to, um, understand these articles better. I have heard from, um, someone who is on the Brookline Housing Authority Board mentioned in passing his concern about the effect of some of the demolition articles on Brookline Housing Authority projects specifically. Um, they have a series of projects that are coming up, um, in the coming years, including thirty two Marion. And, um, there's certainly, that one person has expressed concern about that. Um, when the petitioners reached out to us, you know, a couple of days before the warrant article deadline, um, we, uh, I did ask whether they would be willing to think about limiting the article to two and three family neighborhoods. Um, we will be more likely to figure out potential zoning solutions, the more narrow that scope is. Um, and I will be very transparent and saying in those, in those urgent discussions right before warrant article deadline, um, I was the one that offered, hey, you know what, we are doing this MBTA community study right now. Maybe that's the hook that we could rely on in order to have this temporary demolition, um, in article twelve. And, um, the reason why I was thinking that was a good hook at the time is, again, thinking about two and three family neighborhoods, those are likely gonna be areas, as I've shown you all in earlier presentations, um, areas that at least should be considered, um, in order to meet compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. So I do think there is some nexus there, um, but, um, but if we're kind of more focused on two and three family neighborhoods. Um, I think it's important for me to point out, just because it's something that advisory and, um, you all have asked in the past, uh, with regards to articles twelve, eleven and twelve, we do not believe it would have any staff, um, impacts as far as staff cost, um, if these were implemented. And, um, those are, those are all the comments I have for you right now. Thanks.
Thank you very much Kara. Mike?
Uh, thanks Jonathan Simpson hit on a number of the issues that um, I was concerned about, perhaps the most significant is what's going to change, uh, if we, if we do this, we have a moratorium. Um, the, we have a comprehensive planning pro, process that is about to get started. Hopefully that will lead into a thorough rewrite of the zoning by law. Um, the zoning by law that provides us with great design criteria that, um, alleviate some of the concerns that people have about demolition. I agree that I've seen some demolition projects that have resulted in things that are really quite attractive. Uh, uh, recognizing that they're, they tend to be higher priced units than what was there before. But I've also seen a couple that are just atrocious, uh, from a design perspective, because the developer could do it by right. So I would, I, I think the, the answer to what's going to change is much further out than twenty four months from now, uh, it is, um, a change in, in zoning. But, um, until that happens, honestly, this is just, uh, well, let's not have anything, let's not uh, uh, allow as much, uh, demolition or try and postpone demolition uh, for this couple of years, because we might be able to get away with it. Um, I think the sunset clause, uh, is certainly a very good thing, but I also noticed that, uh, in article eleven it says, and I, I hope I'm looking at the current, uh, current version or that this language hasn't changed, the Building Commissioner shall withhold the demolition permit. That's not an option. That means, and I can understand why the BHA is expressed concern, that means no demolition for that period, and it strikes me that that shall is, uh, is a loaded gun, and I don't, don't really care for that. Um, the only other question I have is, uh, well, I have some other comments about um, the advantages of adaptive reuse, uh, but demolition, and so the ill, the lack of definition, you might gut a house uh, and adaptively reuse it, uh, to great benefit. Um, but if you can't add units, that probably is not gonna happen. Uh, and so that's one, one reason why looking at the zoning by law overall, uh, would make a great deal of sense. Um, and then the only other question I have is whether, uh, the Economic Development Advisory Board is gonna be looking at this at all.
Thank you for those questions. I see Dennis DeWitt's hand.
Uh, yes, thank you, um, the, um, uh, the question of shall is, is just brought directly from the existing demolition delay by law, so that's the operative term that's already there. Um, and, and of course, the, the overriding anything that, that the town does, the Building Commissioner always has the right to, um, order a demolition if there's a, if there's a health and safety issue. Um, uh, the, um, EDAB, um, did look at, um, uh, did look at eleven and, um, uh, was not in favor. Um, that question was asked, um, so that was really all I had to ask, all I had to offer at the moment.
Thank you.
Um, any other of the petitioners want to address things that have been brought up? Sean Lynn Jones?
I just wanted to, uh, say that, um, it was article thirteen that was considered by EDAP. Dennis, I think just this.
Meyer, Meyer, excuse me, you're right.
I don't know if EDAP will consider eleven and or twelve, but they voted, uh, I believe, uh, you know, for no action on article thirteen, although I was not at that meeting. Uh, and I just wanted to make a, a comment, I, I certainly, uh, understand and take into account all of Jonathan Simpson's concerns. But I think if you look at the text of, um, article twelve, the very first paragraph for the amendment is to spell out the purpose of the moratorium, which is in, to engage in studies on how to, uh, you know, reduce the number of demolitions or otherwise uh, mitigate the consequences of demolitions. I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but I, I'll point out that that was, um, I think, you know, you could say we plagiarized that language from the Belmont, uh, Temporary Moratorium, uh, which did pass muster with the Attorney General's Office. And what we were trying to do was to make it clear that this was not just a moratorium for the sake of a moratorium, but a moratorium that would serve a, the purpose of basically hitting the pause button while a better plan for coping with demolitions or preventing demolitions could be devised.
Any other comments by select board members? I have a couple, but I just wanna see if, uh, Nancy?
I'd like to make one comment, which is that, you know, I think Mike raised the issue of sha, the shall and the wording. But, um, as, as Sean or Dennis said, um, this just mirrors what the Preservation Commission does. It's really extending the time for the Preservation Commission to do what it does. It doesn't really, uh, change any of the procedures. So right now, when somebody submits a demolition request, the, the, um, Building Commissioner automatically denies it until the Preservation Commission can determine if the property is significant or not. That wouldn't change, that would be the way things would be done under this extended, temporary extension.
Mike, I see your hand raised, please make it brief, cause uh, this is a public hearing.
Right, so, uh, uh, very, very briefly. Uh, the other thing that Jonathan asked about, uh, which also strikes me is demolition is a broad term, but it is actually defined elsewhere uh, in, in the zoning, uh, zoning by law, if I remember correctly.
Video is on, what's, what's going on?
Uh, and, uh, it would be very sensible to revise this perhaps to include that definition. So it's clear that what the limits are, partial definition, a, a partial, uh, demolition as opposed to taking the entire building down.
Okay, um. So my, my comments, um, you know, I, I wanna get back to Mike's, um, point about, we are, and we've been talking about this for a really long time. We, we really do need to address our overall zoning. I think that that has been the, the thing that has been very frustrating and we've seen. I think that that has been the the thing that has been very frustrating and we've seen um, the frustration take the form of a lot of warrant articles that some call for, you know, let's build as much housing as we can, you know, everywhere. And then there have been warrant articles that, you know, seek to preserve as much as possible. Um, so I'm reminded of the question, what is the problem we are hoping to solve? Um, and I'm trying to apply that lens to both warrant Article eleven and twelve. And that's basically what I'm coming up with. This is more a reflection on our zoning and just how complicated and for what it currently allows that people don't like. So if we can get to that underlying problem, I think a lot of these other things resolve themselves. I also want to really caution that this community and and town meetings specifically has been quite divided on the the bar for what gets preserved. Uh, local historic districts, one got voted down and one got approved. And I will fully admit that I was one of the people who voted against the Kent Street one because just because buildings are old, to me, does not mean that that reaches the bar of preservation. The H. H. Richardson actually had some historical significance, but I still don't really like the mechanism of 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 a local historic district. It it really does feel like the wrong tool for what we're trying to accomplish. So I I'm just trying to bring up the fact that not, this whole community does not agree on what needs to be preserved in that definition. And a local historic district may not get approved. Right now, it it it's a crap shoot because you need two thirds of town meeting, and that has become a very high bar for just about everything. Um, I will end my comments because this is a public hearing and we should hear from members of the public. Uh, Devin, do we have anybody who wish to be heard?
Here, this is Kate. I'm going to promote Ann Lusk.
Ah, great.
Hi there. Hi. I'm really waiting for the next session, but Jonathan had raised a good point, and I wanted to directly speak to your point of what are you going to do in the twenty-four months? As Dennis Stewart and Kara know, on Hart Street, which is two and four, single-family homes, small homes, very modest, built for the Irish Catholics. As citizen volunteers, we worked hard to save one of the historic Irish Catholic workman cottages. I worked nights, weekends, all day, sometimes not doing my day job to write a seventy-two page study report. I was against a deadline and I could only write about the heart houses on Hart Street. There's also one of the historic cottages tucked away behind a triple decker on Cypress. There are also several other cottages on Frank, but I didn't have time to also go into the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds, find all of that history, historic information and write about those areas as well. So we would have more homes to better able meet that eighty percent threshold, which was very, very hard to achieve with low-income households, with some of them being rental. So as citizens trying to preserve the character of a neighborhood, we would have used those extra months to make a better case, to be able to have our plan go to the historic preservation, to be voted on, to be able to come back to town meeting, and then to be voted on by town meeting members. That was our hope, was to let town meeting members decide about this one Irish Catholic neighborhood in Brookline, and if it was worthy of being considered historic enough to save that cottage. We lost that cottage. We didn't have enough time. So thank you for the considering the twenty-four months. It would be wisely used by a community such as ours on Hart Street.
Linda?
Yes, hi. I could barely hear whoever that was, but I guess I'm on now. Okay, hi. Um, Linda Olsen Pelkey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seventeen, also Advisory Committee Member. Um, I guess I just want to speak to the questions around how does this fit into the larger planning effort? And it clearly does, and we all know that this is going to take some time. However, there is a feeling in the community very strongly, and I think it actually motivated our last election hugely. If you remember what happened in our last election, we we changed the composition of town meeting quite significantly because people don't like what's happening. They're they're in a panic. They're they're screaming. And I mean, I get calls every day now, come help us save this house, you know, it from neighbors everywhere. And so it is a huge problem. It does require action now on some level. And I think it is a fair question to say for the moratorium, well, what are we going to do in the meantime? And how, you know, what is the purpose of the moratorium? And I I actually think it's going to take longer than a year. And I also think if we limited it to the areas that are really strongly feeling this process accelerate, and it is accelerating, and I have seen the data that we have thus far, and it is increasing every year. Um, if we limited it to those neighborhoods, I think there are clear things that can be done that would help incentivize saving those homes. It's really not that hugely um, complicated. They would be temporary because the ultimate goal is to have a form-based zoning code that will give us much better results and would also maybe not incentivize the demolitions to such a degree. So myself personally, I'm very supportive, especially of um, Warren Article eleven. Because if it's a sort of straightforwardness and it's pilot nature and it's, you know, um, addressing an issue that's happening right now, but in a way that is also temporary. I do hope um, petitioners on the moratorium will consider um, scoping it smaller and maybe um, being more clear about how to solve the problems in those areas, and that might also be useful. And I think that we should see eleven, twelve, thirteen, and ten, the the tree preservation by law as a cue and cry from our community to please stop the destruction. It's wasteful on every single level, and it really is destroying our neighborhoods.
You have thirty seconds.
So I would appreciate if you um, could see your way to supporting these articles. Thank you.
Thank you. I think John Bassett was next.
Thank you. Uh, hello to all. I support eleven and twelve. Um, our experience has been that demolition delay sometimes produces successful reuse of buildings. Reusing buildings preserves our heritage. It can produce usable space quicker and cheaper. Uh, it has, you know, fewer environmental impact, impacts um, uh, disposal costs and space are minimal. And it is very popular. Um, many people in uh, my neighborhood and and all our neighborhoods would like to see many of our older buildings preserved. Um, finally, I worked on old houses in Brookline for almost thirty years. Um, that's what I did. Uh, we have a lot of well-built old buildings. Uh, lumber used is uh, better uh, generally than what we use today. And uh, fastening was was better. Um, a a lot of our old buildings really are reusable. I hope you support eleven and twelve. Thanks.
At this time, there are forty-three attendees. And I'm promoting Bonnie Bastian.
Hi, everybody. Bonnie Bastian, Town Meeting Member in Precinct Five. Thank you for allowing me to speak for a moment. Um, I just want to speak up because um, you know, as a renter that is having a whole lot of trouble affording staying here. Um, I understand the motivation for this, but I would prefer not to prioritize buildings over people. Um, that doesn't mean that there's, you know, endless demolition of all beautiful buildings. It just means that this is going to be a humongous barrier to a lot of efforts for affordable housing, truly affordable housing. Um, you know, I'm not in favor of, you know, endless luxury condos being built at all. But I worry, uh, the more things are endlessly delayed, um, the farther away we get from making our town um, available to me, to people like me. And there are many, many of us. Um, this might be very popular uh, with your circle of people. I think I live in a different circle, and it is, these ideas are not popular. Um, so, yeah, I am not in support of this. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Uh, any other members of the public who wish to speak? Um, because otherwise I'll acknowledge Dennis Stewart, who has his hand up.
Not at this time.
Dennis?
I I I I I I'm fully appreciate the concern that people have for additional housing, and there are certain places where additional housing can, should be built, and that is the M zones, uh, particularly. I have been looking at the actual demolition cases over the last four years. And outside of the M zones, and and we've been hearing a lot about um, the 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 pain that neighborhoods are feeling and uh, uh, as a number of people have acknowledged, the 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 people who are really upset about what's going on is happening in the two-family neighborhoods. And and has been acknowledged also that the two-family neighborhoods have an FAR uh, uh, which is very large in relation to a lot of the existing housing stock. And and so what's been happening uh, in in case after case is that an existing two-family that may have been bought by a developer for two-point-two million or something like that, and and has a a family in it who probably owns it, and another family that's renting uh, at some still very high price because there's no cheap renting in Brookline. That building gets demolished, and and I've looked at the actual prices, and it gets replaced by two mammoth apartments in the building with an elevator, built-in parking. Um, and they're selling for three-point-four million apiece. So the net effect in these two-family zones is that in fact, more affordable housing is being replaced by very expensive housing. I, we need, we need more affordable housing, but in two-family zones isn't the place to do it. And and where it needs to happen is in the M zones. Um, and uh, it has in a limited number of cases happening, been happening there, but that's not where the developer, that's not what the developers have been targeting because there's fast money to be made in these other projects. Thank you.
Uh, Nancy? You'll have to unmute.
Sorry. Yeah, a quick point, which is that some of these houses, and we know this from anecdotaling, we're trying to get the actual data. But some of these twos and threes have in them units that are moderately priced rental housing. And they're being destroyed on Green Street. Um, or developer has proposed to take down a building in the in the midst of five other, four other buildings that look similar. The streetscape is very unified, and he wants to put in, you know, a boxy thing stretching all the way back into the backyard. Huge, it's a uh, three-family you, uh, house. It's going to be replaced by three mammoth condos that are going to sell, as Dennis said, for three-point-four million. So that type of rental housing, moderately priced rental housing, or moderately for Brookline at any rate, um, is we're losing it. And we're losing that group of people in our neighborhoods that brings us the diversity that Brookline is always, the socioeconomic diversity that Brookline has always enjoyed.
So one of the best things that I learned in grad school was the difference between uh, correlation and causation. And my gut is telling me there, there's a little bit of um, confusion about that when we, when we talk about housing. And I bring this up to say, in my experience, there are two types of developers. I'm not sure if it's just in Brookline, but maybe the Boston area. There are the developers that have some money to kind of, you know, uh, do one or two projects, and this is kind of a side gig for them. And then there are the bigger developers where this is what they do. They've done it for years. They have a a big portfolio of properties in the area. My guess is what's going to happen if we pass this is we will make it quite financially um, difficult for the the developer A-type, um, the the side hustle person to afford to carry those costs for twenty-four months. And they just won't, they won't look at Brookline. So then it's left with the bigger developers who can carry those costs. And what they'll do is they'll pass it on to the people that they sell to. And so instead of three-point-four million dollars, the condos are now going to go for four-point-two because we're not addressing the underlying causation, which is what our zoning currently allows. Um, this is a public hearing. I want to acknowledge that Miriam Ashkanazi, one of our select board members, has joined us. Not sure if you wanted to make a comment before we move in and move on tonight. We've heard from members of the public. I will close the public hearing. We are not going to vote on this tonight. Um, we are, we will take the time to see what the other boards and commissions do, and we thank the petitioners for their comments, uh, their presentations, and thank members of the public for voicing their support or um, lack thereof. Miriam?
Great. Thank you so much, Heather. Uh, first, in case you were wondering, I was at Brooklyn High School's back-to-school night, uh, and it was fabulous. Almost all of my son's teachers were happy that he was in their class. Um, I I have, I have lots and lots of thoughts on this, these warrant articles. I'm going to boil it down to a few. The first is I want to say I support Heather's remarks um, wholeheartedly. The second is for me, you know, um, somebody who is entrenched in um, the world of uh, the impact of redlining. This is a kind of an extension of redlining. This is a way, this is an exclusionary practice. That's how I see it. Um, and because I see it as an exclusionary practice, I'm not going to support it. Uh, I think there are some buildings worth saving. I think a blanket demolition delay is a very blunt tool. And not only is it a blunt tool, but it's the wrong tool for this problem. I mean, I think we all agree we have a problem with affordable housing. Absolutely. We are all on the same page. But to me, this is not the solution. Um, and I won't, I won't uh, be able to support it for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the, uh, to the petitioners. Um, we are going to move on. We have two other public hearing on warrant articles this evening. Speaking of which, uh, I believe the next one is Warren Article thirty, thirty-nine, the Resolution Regarding the Study and Use of the Golf Course. I believe the speaker is Len Woolley on our Transportation Board.
Hello, everyone. Um, let me just share my screen. All right. Hello, my name is Len Woolley. I'm Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eleven. And I'm one of the co-petitioners of Article Thirty-nine. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Here's the outline for my talk. Start off with history. Talk about profitability of a nine-hole golf course, returning revenue to the town, affordability, and open questions. This is a picture of Lada Bradburn Schick. She was the original proponent of the Brookline Municipal Golf Course. She said in a letter to the editor that the enterprise should not only be self-supporting, but should eventually return revenue to the town. She also said, "Your men folks are mine, your boy folks are mine. Why shouldn't they have a place to play that we can afford?" In the Brookline Chronicle, in another article, it notes that she, along with Philip Bauger, gathered over 3,500 signatures in support of the municipal golf course. The golf course opens in 1933, July. And shortly thereafter, there have been many drainage issues at the Putterham Golf Course. $1,933, $3,500 is requested by the Park Commission to buy drainage pipe for the course. In 1994, $20,000 are spent to remove a bulldozer that sunk and nearly submerged while crossing the ninth fairway. And then most recently, in March 2022, Golf Course Flooding Evaluation performed, notes that short-term recommendations would cost around $400,000, and long-term recommendations costing almost $1.8 million. Will non-golf amenities such as trails in Putterham Woods be paid for with golf course enterprise funds? In a recent park and recreation meeting, town meeting member Wendy Sheridan Ames asked if general funds would be used to pay for the necessary tree work at Putterham Woods. The Director of Recreation Department, Lee Jackson, is bringing forward this work in CIP this year. What golf-related expenses will be covered by the general fund? The Bauger Clubhouse, $400,000 slate roof in 2019 was paid for with general funds. The driving range has been successful. In FY 2020, there was a revenue of over $200,000. And FY, FY 2021, revenue of over $460,000. And in the budget revenue of 2022, it's almost $400,000. But could a nine-hole golf course be more profitable? Lexington's Pine Meadows Nine-Hole Golf Course profits exceed those of Brookline's for, for many years. More rounds are played at Lexington's Nine-Hole Golf Course than Brookline's 18-hole golf course, at least for the last few years. Many more nine-hole tee times are available at Brookline than Lexington. I recorded these available times, the mornings of the date shown here on the x-axis. Brookline is shown in blue. And green is Lexington, and the lighter shades of the colors are rain days. As of this morning, Brookline had 113 available nine-hole tee times for today. Lexington had 10 available nine-hole tee times. Are nine holes on a trend to be more popular than 18 holes? Will people who golfed 18 holes choose nine holes instead? Here are some rounds numbers at the Robert T. Lynch Municipal Golf Course. And for FY 23, the budget predicts that 18 holes rounds played will go down. And it's predicting a substantial increase in the number of nine-hole rounds played. So maybe I'm focusing too much on Lexington. According to the National Golf Foundation 2021 article, it said there are more than 3,709 hole courses in the United States, which is about 26% of the total supply. Does Golf Meet Chick's vision of returning revenue to the town? In the Brookline Green Space Alliance article in 2004, it noted, "While the courses contributed to the town's revenue pool each year since 1989, the 200,000 annual fee set several years ago to be paid by the enterprise fund to the town was not met in fiscal year 2004." While the $2,000, $200,000 annual fee may be seen as a somewhat arbitrary figure, it is widely believed that some level of contribution beyond paying their way should be provided by municipal golf courses. The theory is that resources owned by the community should be maximized for the benefit of all taxpayers. And I recently learned from town meeting member Carla Banka, she said that around 2008, the advisory committee recommended that the town fee be eliminated because A, it was decreasing on an annual basis and not likely to reverse. And B, requiring that it be paid merely reduced the fund's reserves, which if one year the weather were uncooperative and rounds of golf subsequently decreased, would be needed to cover operating expenses. Do golf fees meet Chick's goal of affordability? Again, I'm comparing Brookline to Lexington for non-resident weekend rates. Nine-hole round of golf at Brookline is $35, at Lexington it's 25. Club rental is much more Brookline than Lexington. And then overall, all these costs add up to, to a lot more money. And if somebody were to do this four times a month, it's a pretty expensive gym membership equivalent. So, open questions. The request of Warren Article 39 is not to implement a particular solution, but to broaden the scope of the golf course master plan to consider what is possible and to help answer these questions. Could a nine-hole golf course be more profitable through lower maintenance costs and fewer unused tee times? Do nine-hole golf courses allow more people to visit the land? Is Golf Meet Chick's vision of returning revenue to the town? The town is in a tight spot financially. Can golf help? Do golf fees meet Chick's goal of affordability for all? Thank you.
Sorry, I muted myself. Thank you, Len. Can you go back to the second to last slide? Where you compare non-resident rates to non-resident rates for Lexington? Did you do a similar comparison for resident rates?
Those numbers are readily available. The, the difference is also similar, and I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head, but I, I could get those for you pretty easily.
Okay, it would be interesting because, you know, I didn't know this Schick person. Obviously, she, she and I probably didn't cross paths. She's probably dead and I'm alive. But when she says affordable to everyone, when people say everyone, they usually mean their community. And by their community, they mean residents of the town. So I'd just be interested in seeing that comparison. Bernard?
Yeah, my question is, why did you include club rental in the, in, in the chart here? I don't think very many people rent clubs when they go golfing. Maybe I'm wrong, but it's been my experience.
I included it because I am a new golfer. I, I took it up this summer. I played at both of these courses. And I played at Lexington first. I thought it was great. They gave me the clubs for $7, and then I showed up at Brookline, not knowing how much I was going to pay for clubs. I was a little bit surprised to be paying $30. So that's, that's why I included it.
If you exclude them, the difference is a little smaller. Still, still a difference, but not as extreme as you, you have.
Agreed.
Well, and, and several factors could come into play. My, our clubhouse is incredibly small square footage-wise. I'd be interested to see what the square footage is of Lexington, where they could keep more on hand. And so, you know, if they have more supply, then the demand is not as much of a factor. That's just a shot in the dark based on, you know.
Their, their clubhouse is about half the size of ours.
Really?
It's much smaller.
Okay. John?
Thanks very much. Thank you, Len. Very interesting history. I always love hearing, you know, history of things that I have not explored myself. And this, these explorations into the history of the golf course, you know, have a lot of value. That being said, so does, so does the, 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 the role of the Park and Rec Commission in making the very decisions that we're talking about tonight. And their, their decision was made the other night when, I think it was by a vote of four to zero to one abstention. They voted to recommend no action on this article because they have underway their own master plan process for determining a lot of the questions that you're raising, determining the outcome of a lot of the questions you're raising. And, you know, frankly, with, with the goal in mind of improving the existing 18-hole golf course, that doesn't preclude there being other activities at the golf course. But they're well on, they're, they're well into a master plan process, which was thought through carefully and, you know, adopted step by step. And at this point, it's a process aimed at determining how best to improve the existing 18-hole golf course. So I, I would no more decide that the select board should usurp the Park and Rec Commission's role in determining their master plan and the outcome of their master plan insofar as the future of the 18-hole golf course. Then, then I would expect town meeting to usurp the role of the Park and Rec Commission in this. And essentially, what this article proposes to do is, is exactly that. It's to sort of put the town meeting in charge of deciding issues that are already being examined and decided by the Park and Rec Commission. So i- if the Park and Rec Commission had adopted this article, I'd be perfectly okay with this article. But the Park and Rec Commission voted four to nothing to, to one abstention to recommend against this article. And I kind of feel we, we need to let them continue to do their job. And if at the end of the day, they decide some of these recommendations are of value, you know, great, you know, we, we will, we will have seen two sides sort of come, come together on something. But I think we have to accept that it's for them to decide.
Miriam?
Thank you. So I, I agree in the sense that, first of all, thank you, Len. I agree in the sense that there is a master plan, it's being enacted. I try not to micromanage what's happening at the level of committees or in the departments. But this is just to take a look at this from another angle. This isn't telling them they have to do it. This isn't telling, this is, there's nothing prescriptive about this. This is, in my opinion, a, a lens on the master plan that wasn't necessarily there the first time around. And so to me, it's also a lens on the master plan that has more of an equity bent. What else and who else and how else can we use this property in a way to appeal to more people that got missed the first time around in the master plan? So I, I don't, I, I would have, I would feel very differently about it, John. I would agree if they, if this was like, hey, you have to make this a nine-hole golf course. I'd be like, whoa, but that's not what this is. This is, hey, did you think about this? Did you do the specs? Do we, did we think about what we else we could do? Now, the flip side of that, of course, is what can we do with the property if we make it a nine-hole golf course? And that also has to be reasonable and, and feasible. And it has to have a lens on how does it serve the public, the greatest good for the public? And it can't be too expensive because we know we're dealing with a structural deficit already. But this is just asking a question and gathering more information. And so for those reasons, I support it with the, you know, those asterisks that, depending on the findings, I'm not sure I'm inclined to tell Rec what to do. But at least to make sure we have all of the information to make those decisions. Thank you.
Any other board members wish to comment before we open this up to public comment? Not seeing anyone. So Devon, let me know who's first up for public comment.
First person signed up for public comment is Anne Moss.
Anne, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your time will begin.
I'll try to speak more loudly this time. I attended that Parks and Rec meeting at which the golf course was discussed. And I have attended many Parks and Rec meetings when I worked on Clark Park and also Robinson Park. And both project designs ended up highly satisfactory for this neighborhood. I was disappointed in the decisions of the Park and Rec Commission members when they sided with the people who had said that the existing 18-hole golf course is responsive to climate change. They mentioned the existence of the peat, which is a carbon sink. They also mentioned the existence of the trees. But they didn't mention the existence of the fairways. The fairways are harder ground. That land for nine holes could be made into a tree nursery to grow trees in Brookline rather than bringing in trees from other states that have not acclimated to Brookline. We would then have a ready supply because especially with drought, not being able to get the tree gators out on all the trees, we lose trees. And if we had our own tree nursery, we could then maintain trees and replant them. Second, there's a high need for community gardens. And this summer, I will teach an urban agriculture course at BU and know the value of not just planting some bulbs or flowers, but being able to actually address food insecurity and grow your own food at a community garden. That could happen also on the fairways. As a biker, I had also tried to be able to have biking somewhere near the golf course. I know from having studied bicycle facilities all across the country that there are many instances where a bicycle facility coexists with a golf course. And I was told by some member of the Parks and Rec Commission that they had asked about putting up netting. So you have a bike path beside a golf course. And they were told, no, that that would not work. But I don't know, who told them no? Was it the golfer saying, no, we don't want to have from peripheral vision? I used to play golf when I was young. We don't want to have from peripheral vision, some bikers going by. So it's less convenient for us to have bikers near there. And finally, I will end with the case that I made at the Parks and Rec Commission when they talked about a swimming pool. Brookline does not have an outdoor swimming pool. It's hot in the summer. The children who get to play in the water in Brookline play in a splash pad. I have grandchildren, and when they're five and six, they're done with the splash pad. So we're not giving children in Brookline an outdoor place to cool off with our hot summers. So I suggested to Len and the others, bike to the pool. Imagine Brookline having two ways to study the urban planning in Brookline. One is which are safe routes to get to a pool. And where, if you get there, is the best location for a pool. And I just would like this land to be explored for biking and for a pool. Thank you. Bye.
The next person signed up for public comment is Gideon Coltoff. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your time will begin.
Oh, thank you, Gideon Coltoff, town meeting member, Precinct Six. I hope everybody can hear me okay and ignore my mess behind me. Anyway, I like to speak very much and strongly in favor of this Warren Article proposal. The golf course is not something that most Brooklinites really use very much. It sounds like it is more of a drain on the public, on the public accounts than it is actually a benefit to it. We know that there are many other uses that we could use this land for. I mean, it's a great huge piece of property. We constantly are talking in town meeting and elsewhere about the dearth of playing fields. Well, we could put one here or two or probably more. I don't really know. But I think the presenter made a very compelling case that a nine-hole course, if we even need that, is probably more than sufficient to cover the needs of most golfers in this area. And if they need much more, then there's another golf course literally right next door. I strongly, strongly feel this should go before town meeting. I believe the, the fact that it is not prescriptive is very helpful. It does allow to discussion of, as a previous speaker mentioned, a pool or fields or whatnot. And having the support of town meeting basically coming to, pushing, of pushing their opinion towards the Parks and Rec Commission to make it clear that they want this to be looked at more, more in depth as terms of a broader view, I think is incredibly important. I think that will have a lot of weight and will probably pursue, cause them to look more broadly at these types of things. So yes, I will wrap up right now, but I just wanted again, just say I very strongly support this proposal. And I hope that the, that's, that the select board approves it. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is David Trevette. You've been promoted to a panelist. Your three minutes can begin.
Thank you very much, Chair and Board members. I also attended that Park and Rec Commission hearing.
I also attended that Park and Rec Commission hearing, and that's actually what prompted me to submit comments to the. Advisory Committee Subcommittee and to speak up tonight. I have no particular expertise to share in the particular of parks or golf, but I do generally understand processes. The need to challenge assumptions, our responsibility to consider what may seem to be radical ideas if they might offer substantial benefits. And in particular, the importance of seeking opportunities to improving the utility and value of key town owned assets. My impression, which was reinforced by that Park and Rec Commission hearing. Is that the consultants developing the master plan were never asked to consider. The possibility, or at least did not consider, the possibility of reducing the eighteen hole course to a nine hole course. So in fact, as sort of John seemed to imply. It was designed to be a master plan for an eighteen hole golf course and surroundings. So the consultants were not asked to support what other recreational and green space opportunities might have been opened up. By reducing the course to nine holes, as well as the the potential financial viability of such an option. In my mind, this is a major missed opportunity. Yes, there are many issues and questions and challenges involved. All the more reason to have disinterested professionals tasked with addressing them. Unless there is solid evidence to support it, we should avoid the assumption, as was made in that commission hearing. That a nine hole course would dramatically reduce the income to the town. Compared to the current eighteen hole course, and that it would lead to financial difficulties. I think we need an analysis to check out that assumption, it may be even more comparisons than what Lynn has already produced. Given number of unused rounds of the course, it's certainly possible. That a shorter course involving a smaller investment of personal time to play might attract more golfers and actually increase the total revenue. And that might help subsidize other no fee recreational uses, which thereby could improve access and equity. As you consider this warrant article, it's important not to construe a potential vote support the warrant article. As indicating any support for a particular alternative use, I heard those two things. Confused in some of the discussions of this warrant article, the question here is simply. Whether it's worth studying the possibilities that could be created by converting the eighteen hole course to nine holes. Especially as our town lacks sufficient outdoor space to address all of its needs, we should not overlook. This option for this very valuable and unusual town asset. As a Brookline resident, I continue to be a bit bothered by the fact that the current golf course predominantly ninety-two percent. Serves golfers who are not from Brookline. That might bring more Brookline residents to this space. Thank you for considering these comments.
The next person signed up for comment is Sarah Erickson, you've been promoted to a panelist, you can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable.
Hi. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm Sarah Erickson, I'm a town meeting member precinct one. I support the golf course remaining an eighteen hole course. And I have one question and one comment. My question pertains to the Park and Rec two thousand nineteen master plan survey that the petitioners used both in their article description and on their website. This page, this first page referenced with the golf finishing twenty-one of twenty-one. You can also see in the same survey, senior programs finishing twenty of twenty-one. The petitioners are using this argument against the golf course, but isn't it also an argument against senior programs? The question in this survey was about usage. If you scroll down to the second page of the survey, you will see that both the golf course and the senior programs are overwhelmingly supported in Brookline. Why was this fact admitted by the petitioners? As obviously people who use neither overwhelmingly support both the golf course and the senior programs. Why do the petitioners feel they need to provide this false narrative? And my comment is, this article promotes golf as an elite sport. Because the only other eighteen hole golf course in Brookline is the country club. Potterham provides the opportunity for Brookline student athletes who are not wealthy. To play golf at an affordable price with their friends and as part of their school golf team. Isn't Brookline all about inclusivity and opportunity for all students? The message this warrant sends is just the opposite. If you support this article, you are sending the message to the Brookline families and their kids. That golf is an elite sport and that their kids' passion to play golf and play on a golf team. Does not matter. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is David Croup. You've been promoted to a panelist, you can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, my name is David Croup, I'm a resident of North Brookline, and. I'm interested in this warrant article because I think it would allow us to explore. More opportunities in terms of using the golf course, and the particular concern I have is the fact that. South Brookline is very poorly served by our bicycling transportation network, and if you look at a map, you can easily see why there's a whole network of local streets just south of the. The golf courses and really the only way to get around them is to get up to Newton Street, which is a very high stress, high volume, high traffic, high speed road. And then to either get on Hammond or Lee Clyde, and. When you look at the golf course, you just realize, gee, if people could just somehow access the golf course, they could get up to Woodland and then basically access a whole network of local streets. In just north of Route nine, and. I think we have an obligation to consider this, this is a critical shortcoming of our transportation network right now, children basically in South Brookline have no way to bicycle to the high school, even though. It's a short four mile. Ride from basically the streets down like Rusted and others. And I think this warrant article is basically just saying, let's look at some other uses. And I don't believe that Rec and Parks did look at these issues, and. You know, I certainly think we should defer to commissions, but I also think commissions have to be inclusive in their. On decision making process, I mean, I'm, I know biking Brookline, which is a well-known advocacy group in Brookline, was never asked our opinion about the golf course, I don't believe the bicycle advisor committee was ever asked. About this issue, and I guess I see this huge opportunity. That, you know, maybe it's not possible, but at least we should be considering it. So whether that's through the vehicle of this warrant article or some other option, but. We have an opportunity to really create. And you know, I just say, I know others have said, well, we could put protected bike lanes on some of these arterial roads, and I would just say, yeah, but. We have a much better alternative, we can actually create a very welcoming, low-stress, safe route. For students in South Brookline to get to the high school, so. That's however that can be achieved, I mean, if that means Warren Article thirty-nine, I'm in favor. Of using that as a vehicle to consider that option. Thank you.
The next person signed up for comment is John Bowman, you've been promoted to a panelist, you can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, my name is John Bowman, town meeting member precinct ten. I'll be quick here because my views have already been expressed by others, but I want to lend my voice. In support of Warren Article thirty-nine. And in support of the views expressed by Miriam Ashkenazi, David Travett, and David Croup. Thank you.
Devon, I see Richard Nangle's hand up in the attendees list.
Yeah. Richard, you're just gonna need to accept the promotion request.
Richard, you've been promoted to a panelist, you can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, your three minutes will begin.
Okay, I'm unmuted, do you hear me now?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. To listen to this tonight is is to listen to misinformation on acid. The fairways are peat, peat is a climate mitigator. The Park and Recreation Commission went at the golf master plan after seeing a poll that showed. High support for the golf course among non-golfers in the athletic field master plan, but for some people. None of that matters, the warrant article should be voted down, it should be voted no action, but there are a couple of issues that need highlighting. And I'd like to draw your attention to one of the whereas clauses in the warrant article. It's near the end, it's the one that reads, whereas the preliminary master plan has not included the Park and Recreation Commission's. Original intention of considering a nine-hole course. The Park and Recreation Commission rejected that statement through its vote last week against Article thirty-nine, never any time. Has the Park and Recreation Commission contemplated a nine-hole golf course, nor should they. Any more than we would contemplate half a basketball court, half a baseball field, half a soccer field, and on and on and on. Or a bike path that would only be good for one-way biking. Nevertheless, the false narrative, the Park and Recreation walked back a promise to look at nine holes has been used as a recruitment tool for the warrant article. And has been repeated in emails to the Park and Recreation Commission. Who on town meeting would attach their names to this false allegation? If they know it's a false allegation, because it is, creating the appearance of impropriety where there is none is not something that we can ignore. The golf course will be around long after its critics are gone, continuing to serve a diverse working class. A group of people and in its sphere of influence. No board of, no board or commission is going to implement a resolution based on a false narrative, but that does not mean this resolution is harmless. Our volunteers and our employees need to know that when baseless allegations arise, we will vigorously refute those allegations and defend those who are targeted. Thank you.
Antonia Balata, you've been promoted to a panelist, you can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Blackboard and the public here. I thank you, Richard, also for speaking in our regard, I think. I'm I'm a Park and Rec Commissioner, and I also was a member of the design review team for the master plan. For the golf course, it was a lot of work, and I just wanted to clarify that. As a non-golfer, my participation with the master plan. Was to always look for new opportunities for the community, Brookline's community at the golf course. And I asked the question multiple times, you know, about fields, about other needs. But as Richard said, I think. The golf course has gotten targeted many, many times over the years, just because it is our open space, a hundred and twenty acres sounds like a lot. It's a very, very complicated site, there's water one and two inches below the top surface. You walk on the fairways and they are spongy, we cannot put a fair, a soccer field or a field on top of. Pete because it's sponge. It would take a huge amount of money at this point to change that, and even if we invested money to change it. It would eventually go back to the same state because it is a wetland. The golf course is more than just a golf course for. Brookline, it is also a huge climate. Change asset. I heard not too long ago by, and I'll mention. Michael Berger, who was the founder of Green Space Alliance, and he said, sometimes land just needs to be. You know, we don't have to override it with all these activities, that land is working hard. To provide a safe, clean environment, and we are working hard and. Justin and Lee are working very hard to incorporate more and more activities. Into the golf course. It also is being managed by not our tax dollars, but by the dollars of people who come into our res, into our community and pay to play golf. So that's another thing, if we reduce the golf course, where is the money going to come from to maintain it? We are trying to look for fields, so we did look at the golf course for fields. We're trying to create more connectivity through the golf course, through Putterham Woods to Dane Park. There are things that we're trying to solve that have been proposed in the Warren article. And just the commission's. You know, goals and interests also. But I would like to say it is a very complicated piece of land from a landscape architect's point of view. And it is going to take a lot of money to sink it, so even though it sounds like we could. Provide all these things. Unless the money's there to do it, and we also in Park and Rec have a lot of other needs that we're trying to come to terms with as to which are the priorities. And where we are going to invest this money and if we can find it. Thank you.
The next person signed up for public comment is Anthony Ishak, you've been promoted to a panelist, you can unmute and your three minutes will begin.
Thank you, Anthony Ishak, town meeting member precinct one, I'm also a co-petitioner on this warrant article. Just wanted to echo some of the statements that were previously said by some of other speakers, including the benefit for us as bicyclists in terms of. Being able to commute across South Brookline and the safer route that it would offer. The mention of community gardens, our community gardens are already impacted around town. And the benefit of the community gardens was highlighted in terms of the benefit, not only to the people who use the garden, but potentially. Allowing fresh produce and foods to be used in places such as our food bank, potentially for public housing and schools. And also, I think one of the bigger points to think about is really this point of access. So about seven to eight percent of Brookline people use this golf course. I try and think of how many other resources a town would dedicate and set aside. Where the majority of the use. The predominant use would come from outside of the area. And I think this is something to really think about in terms of how the land is being used for the very residents and inhabitants of our town. Mr. Nangle referenced the fact that, you know, we wouldn't build half courts and half soccer fields. But keep in mind, golf courses by rule can be smaller than what's currently constructed, so we're not asking to just strictly go to a half court. But there are smaller courts, certainly we've seen it with Major League Baseball stadiums, we've seen it with. Footy fields for soccer and various other things, so there are ways to think about potentially using this land. That would make it more efficient while still serving for the benefit of the current golfers. But for more than just seven to eight percent of our town. The last thing I want to highlight is the environmental benefit, so you know, this is green space, so it would need to be maintained as green space, we all are aware of that. I think some of the scare tactics around it have been used as in, you know, the land will be used in a way that's not friendly to that environment. But we need to keep in mind that the golf course still requires maintenance, some of pesticides, and pesticides are not a hundred percent safe. And also the use of water, yes, we currently have water in the reservoir and we're okay. But our winters are getting warmer and we don't know what that'll mean in terms of the usage of water just to maintain a pretty field. So I would encourage you to vote favorable action on our warrant article as written, it's just our quest to. Consider it in just a different lens, it's not our requirement that an action be done, but just think about the potential for how it could benefit. More than seven to eight percent of our town. Thank you for your time.
The next person signed up for comment is Nancy O'Connor, you've been promoted to a panelist, and your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Thank you, everyone, Nancy O'Connor, Park and Recreation. New Chair, and I want to thank you all for for loving our parks and open spaces, to see this much enthusiasm. Over our precious land is, really feels great. I was the abstention on the vote, because I have still more questions. I don't, I'm not leaning one way or the other, and I'm thrilled to see that Antonia stepped up to to talk about her experience. On the master plan design, Lynn's done an awful lot of work in his group and has been. You know, really moving the, really moving the discussion forward. Just a couple of points I wanted to make. In two thousand and nineteen, the commission pushed for a master plan, there was a. Offer of proposal on the table to do some work, and we really wanted to slow it down and know what do we want to do there, and so the commission pushed for the master plan, I think. Lynn mentioned that in some of his previous. Bits of information, so. We, in the, in the request for proposals, we also asked that. bits of information. So we, in the, in the request for proposals, we also asked that that the land be looked at and Antonia just mentioned it with other opportunities in mind, not to the level of, of detail that, that the folks are talking about now. But what else can we do there around the edges? How do we get more people in there? Can we minimize the footprint? Other opportunities for walking trails and for other bits and pieces. So I feel like the master plan has been looking at some of these things and we've been working on it for a while now. Then there's no cost to the town, by the way. The, this is, runs on an enterprise fund, so we're not borrowing money from the town to make the golf course run. And again, the only reason I wanted to, to jump on is to thank Antonia for talking about the master plan process. And, you know, look forward to seeing what's going to happen, which could be exciting. Anything that we do that's big, it's going to cost a lot of money. And that we all know. So thank you all for your time.
At this time, there are twenty seven attendees. No one's using the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment.
Great. Thank you to everyone who made a public comment. I will close the public hearing portion of this. But I, I know some of my select board members would like to make comments. I see John's hand up. Mike wanted to say something. So since I don't see John's video, oh, okay. John?
Sorry about that. Yeah, thi- this has been a very good discussion. I want to thank everybody who's participated in it. And, and I was very glad to see Antonia step up and I was also very glad to see Nancy step up. Because I feel like one of the things that maybe has been a little bit lost in all of this is who, who is our Park and Recreation Commission? We have some really good people on that Park and Recreation Commission and they have worked hard for a long time, not just on this issue, but on a lot of issues. Nancy's one of them. Antonia's one of them. Clara Boucher has been on the commission for quite some time. Teresa Mooney, John Pan, Jean Carroll, Lauren Bernard's, one of the newer members. The, these are people who stepped up and have been, as I say, putting in the time and giving a lot of thought to the very issues that everybody is talking about tonight. And, and I hope that by meeting a couple of them tonight and by maybe thinking about them in a slightly different way as not being these remote people who never listen to, you know, anybody who has a different opinion about the golf course. But as people who always think about what is the best use of the golf course? And, and that's what led them to this whole master planning process. In addition to them, we have some terrific staff at the golf course. Justin Lawson is doing it, is a great job up there. He's excited about the master plan. And so this is why, if you, if you'll forgive me, those of you who are enthusiastic about this article, this is why I'm pushing back a little bit. I, I really want the voices that were heard tonight to be heard by the Park and Rec Commission. Out of respect for the fact that they are the ones that have been thinking about these issues for a long time and they are the ones who are going to have to decide if they want to change course in any way with the master plan. Second thing I wanted to say, because I don't want anybody to be misled by, you know, what I've said tonight in support of the eighteen hole golf course. I am not a golfer and anybody who has seen me attempt golf would assert he is not a golfer. It's pretty obvious from, from just a couple of attempts at, at playing golf. There are people who don't play golf and, and don't use the golf course for that purpose, who fully support there being an eighteen hole golf course in Brookline. Because we're excited that there are a lot of golfers who, who, who are devoted to the game. And by the way, a lot of them, the game is the eighteen hole game. You know, not, no disrespect to nine hole golf, but you know, the game is the eighteen hole game. The, for, for many golfers, that's what attracts them. I was at the golf course to give my regards to John Bain, who retired after thirty years, on thirty five years, actually, I think is to be corrected. On the Park and Rec Commission, many of those years as chair. That parking lot on a Thursday at eleven o'clock in the morning was full, full. And it isn't always that way, but there's enthusiasm for golf in this community and outside this community. And that's why enough golfers show up to play that course regularly to make it self-supporting. And how many other of our recreation activities are self-supporting? End of speech.
Mike?
Thanks Heather. I, I want to say that the last time I played golf, it was miniature golf and the rental fee for the club was included in the fee. And that was probably when my now forty five year old daughter was ten. I, I must say, the comments about ninety two percent of the people coming from out of town, if we had a, if, if any of us ran a, a business that attracted ninety two percent of its customers from outside of the town, they would consider that to be a ripper on success. The reason that we can offer golf to Brookline residents is from the money that those people from out of town pay. And the question is, do we want to continue to offer golf to, to Brookline residents? And it seems to me like the, the, the service that we've seen say, yeah, we do. The other thing I, I, I want to say is that the, there's been a lot of, there were a lot of suggestions about other uses for that land. Some of them might make a great deal of sense. I think the idea of trying to integrate a bike path in there somewhere may be interesting. It may not be the easiest kind of path to navigate. But the idea of building a pool or something of that sort. It's the wrong place for a pool. It's far from, from the center of population in the town. And, and that's a very expensive proposition. And honestly, I don't think that's fiscally responsible to really be, be talking about that. The last thing I'll say is, is a wisecrack. It strikes me as very odd to be talking about growing food in order to reduce food costs for when we're talking about doing that in Chestnutville. But as I said, that's just a wisecrack.
I will, oh, Bernard?
Yeah, I guess I have to speak up because it seems that on the select board, I'm the one person who is not an avid golfer, but I love the game. So, so what would I say? You know, one of the reasons why an eighteen hole golf course is, is of value is that there are golf leagues. And I remember when I lived in, in Ohio, as a member of a golf league of mainly black professional golfers who just loved the game and eighteen holes was what we played for. Now that, is that the reason to maintain eighteen holes? Not the only reason, but I think it's something to be considered. And maybe, maybe the issue is if, are we looking to have a golf course that's really reaching out to, you know, those golfers who really care about the game and really are into the game? Or do we think this is just a little, you know, part that you know, i- is not that significant in terms of how it's used? So I had to say that because I am a golfer, but hopefully that's of interest.
So I have a, a couple of thoughts. They, they've been kind of hinted at by numerous speakers, but I, I just want to put out my own thoughts. One is you really need to understand what an enterprise fund is if you are going to continue to support moving away from an eighteen hole golf course. I don't care about golf. I don't really golf that often. But there are people in town that care about it very much and I've been elected to represent all of the people in Brookline. So if there are people who support it, then I feel an obligation to, you know, as long as it is revenue neutral, and in this case, I believe it's revenue positive. I, I'm, I'm not convinced that we should do away with it because then it does end up on our tax roll. And as Mike mentioned, the, the cavalier suggestions of other uses are not revenue neutral at all. A community garden is a major revenue suck. So, and then a couple of other thoughts, as I've been listening to the, to the conversation tonight. I'm, I'm a little disturbed at the use of you know, ninety something percent of people who use the golf course come from away. Now, I've been on a lot of meetings and I've heard a lot of language over the years. And that language is usually called out for the othering that people tend to do. They don't like other people coming in to town. Now, usually we've heard that when it comes to housing, but I'm a little surprised to hear it in a different flavor here. We do a lot of things for certain groups with our public land. Earlier this evening, we had a conversation about what's the right cost to, to apply to outdoor dining? If you don't use that, you know, should we not allow anyone to, to do that? I, I think it's nearly the same principle. I don't have a dog. But there are plenty of, you know, dog parks. I stay away from Amory Park because there tend to be a lot of dogs off leash. Should we do away with that? Because there are a number of people that don't feel comfortable with off-leash dogs. I don't have children, but I don't, you know, I give the stink eye every time I pass a playground that I don't think I'm ever going to be the beneficiary of, you know, as I go into my forties and I, I still have, I've gotten married. So, you know, it, it's a slippery slope is basically my point. So I, I'm not convinced that I really want to wade into telling the Parks and Rec Commission who are entrusted with this master plan on what to do with this asset that I think is, is being used and it is in a good position and it's serving a need in the community. And I would use the, the small C community, the community at large, not just Brookline. We are part of a region. So I will end my thoughts here. Mike, did you have a follow up? Okay. Thank you very much to the petitioners. We probably won't be making a vote this evening, but we will certainly be in touch when we put it back on our agenda. So I will close that public hearing if I did not already. Sadly, the high school kids who were the petitioners of warrant article forty one had school tomorrow, so we will reschedule them and I will put them at the beginning of the warrant article hearings. My apologies. That was an oversight on my part. So that brings us to warrant article two in the special, Melissa Goth.
Hello, everyone. I know that we had a presentation on the Pierce School, I believe, last week. But I think the board is now taking a different direction when it comes to the timing of the election. If we were to use the appropriation article that we filed for Pierce, it would be, need to be contingent on a debt exclusion. And there is a ninety day window with which the debt exclusion would be able to be used. That brings us to February thirteenth. So unless the board was planning on scheduling an election before February thirteenth, this article will not be able to be used to support the appropriation. We would then need to refile a warrant article at either special town meeting or an annual town meeting in order to, to fund the, the project. So the recommendation under this article, as long as the board is not planning on a, an election before February thirteenth would be for no action.
Great. So let me do two things. One, open the public hearing officially. And two, so let me just kind of back up. Earlier this summer, when the warrant was open, the board thought that we were going to put the Pierce debt exclusion on the November ballot. We had to hit a deadline because it was a state ballot and stuff happened as it often does, and we chose not to, to pursue that option. Which means that we had to ask the town clerk whether or not we could hold. And by we, I mean really him and his limited staff could hold an extra election in the winter or the spring. He advised that it would be very difficult for him to, to pull that off with all of the things going on, a September primary, a general in the November, and then all the stuff going on with a record-setting town meeting, number of warrant articles in the winter and then having to get all of the nomination papers ready for the annual town election in the spring. So all of that being said, we are now aiming for the May election to put the Pierce school debt exclusion on that, which means that this warrant article doesn't really make sense for us to pursue it because even if we pass it, it becomes moot by February thirteenth. So that is why Melissa has recommended that we vote no action. And then what we will do is wait for voters to weigh in in May and then we will have filed this exact same warrant article for a special within the special at the annual town meeting so that we can close it on the first night and we can hopefully pursue spending the money that I'm really optimistic that voters will approve for this project. Miriam?
Thank you. What about the MSBA? Wasn't, there was an issue with the timing of the election and MSBA funding. Can you speak to that?
Yes. So I, I made the announcement at the beginning of the meeting, no worries, but it's relevant to this discussion. I met with Jack, Jack McCarthy and I was aided by Chaz and Melissa. He is the chair of the MSBA. I think he thought we were going to ask for more money. And so when he found out that we weren't asking for more money, he was like, oh, yeah. I'll, I'll give you the extra two weeks. And I'm like, thank you. So we have the extension that solves a lot of problems. So mainly the town clerk's office, which I just, I, I, I can't bring myself to tell the town clerk to do something that he's uncomfortable doing. So we will have the election in May.
Great. Thank you. And good job.
Thank you. Any other comments? This is a public hearing. So I'm not sure if any members of the public, if you want to raise your hand. I'll ask somebody to promote you because I don't know how to do that.
Madam Chair, there are eighteen attendees right now and I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
Great. Thank you so much. Bernard?
Yeah, I, I think I know the answer, but I think people would want to know why we have item eight, which is the withdrawn article for the Pierce appropriation. Someone could explain that?
Sure. It's just so that the board can take a vote on the article of no action. So we usually have our public hearing under one section and then vote on another section.
Okay. So it's the same article?
Correct.
Under, okay.
Scott Ananian has his hand up. Kate, would you be so kind to promote?
Okay, here comes Scott.
I need everything. Hey, hello. Just a quick question. Is there any timing constraints between the town meeting vote at the end of May and the townwide vote at the start of May? Or is the MSBA only concerned about the town, the timing of the townwide vote?
I believe it's the timing of the townwide vote. They want to see that voters approve the, the debt exclusion and then I, we will file this as a special within. So my hope, and I actually won't be on the board at this point, so it's a little bittersweet for me. But my hope is that town meeting- But my hope is that uh town meeting uh dispenses with it uh as the first order of business on the very first night.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, so I will close the public hearing and then Melissa, am I moving no action on uh warrant article two in the special within the special?
Yes.
Okay, ooh, after like five and a half years, I'm finally like getting that correct. Um, all those in favor? Bernard?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Miriam?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you so, so much. Okay, um, select board policy on, oh, eight warrant articles withdrawn. Do we have to actually do anything with that? I think that was Bernard's question, but.
Yeah, I thought we just had to say no action on the warrant article and the implication being that uh I guess at some point we'll withdraw it.
Well, no action is fine and we'll make sure that the the moderator knows that the the intent is to not move it.
Okay, so I guess thi- this item eight really is unnecessary.
Yeah, the the moderator generally would skip over and on uh no action motion anyway. So we'll just make it clear that the board um is not recommending moving this article forward.
Great, thank you so much, Melissa. Okay, select board public notice policy. Um, I've completely forgotten what this is about, so maybe Devon can remind us.
Thank you, Chair Hamilton. Good evening, everyone. Devon Fields, Assistant Town Administrator for Operations. As you can see, I've had to maneuver to my phone because we're having some wifi issues um in Winthrop by the Sea this evening. So as you may remember, uh, a few weeks ago, I spoke to you about um uh warren article eight, which is the warrant article that was filed by town administration because of the language embedded in our bylaw that made it a requirement for certain things to be noticed by a newspaper in circulation in the town of Brookline. So what we did for that warrant article was just simply strike the language, um, you know, noticed in a newspaper and substituted that language with uh select board public notice policy. So here before you tonight is a draft version of the select board's public notice policy that would apply to those items in the bylaw uh that this warrant article is trying to impact. And there's a little uh explainer at the top of the policy, but I just want to make clear to the board tonight that this is a baseline of what we're looking to do and will be layered on top of, you know, communication strategy. And this is not part of our community engagement strategy. This is just a baseline of getting the information out on these specific items that are listed in that bylaw that's referenced in warrant article eight. And I'm happy to go over uh the policy with you. Or if you've read it and you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Considering the hour, let's see what select board members want to do. Anyone have any questions about the policy?
The only other thing I'll add, Heather, is that Chair Hamilton is that um the reason that we wanted this to be a policy and not language directly in the bylaw is because this is something that we see as evolving and the board can take this anytime to adjust, uh, I think back to your remote meeting policy that hadn't been looked at in uh, you know, since I believe two thousand eight. And so this is something that, you know, we'd like to see you revisit every three to five years to make sure that it's still uh with current technology.
Excellent. I I completely agree that that is the way to handle it. Uh, you know, two thousand eight, the uh coming of age of FaceTime. Um, and now we have Zoom. So um, you know, things certainly change. Technology changes and we need to be able to change our policies without having to change our bylaws. So um, I applaud the work of staff for working on this. Any questions about adopting this policy? Do you feel comfortable voting on this policy this evening? I'm seeing some nodding of the heads. And that is a signal to, I think, for how much we trust our staff. Melissa?
I just wanted to add that when this article, when the article is reviewed by the advisory committee, even though they did vote in favor of it, they were anxious to see the the policy. And I I did indicate that we would be putting this in the combined reports as part of your article explanation.
Great. Thank you so, so much. Uh, seeing no questions, um, I will move adoption of this latest select board public notice policy. All those in favor? Bernard?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Miriam?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much for working on this.
Thank you.
Okay, board and commission appointments, last thing on our agenda, but certainly not straightforward. Um, I think the biggest thing that we have to take up this evening is what to do about the police commissioners advisory committee. When we originally created this committee, it was five members. Uh, and then we also saw fit to appoint the chair. We then extended it to six members. And in consultation with the outgoing chair, uh Linda Roseman, she indicated that it is a lot of work. And she was recommending that we consider bumping it up to to seven members just because of all of the work that is entailed. Um, I'm inclined to to consider that and and to move it. Um, but I would love to hear the thoughts of other board members.
Uh, Mike? Yeah, I I think that uh that would be a very sensible move. Um, there is a substantial workload. I have to say that uh um I have to Sam delighted to say that I think this is uh one of those advisory committees that actually has provided some good advice. Uh, and uh certainly the the work that was done on police procedures and so forth was really excellent. Uh, and um uh expanding uh expand to one other member is probably a good idea. Especially since we actually have two applicants who look very, very well qualified.
John?
Um, well, I just to be clear, I think we have three or more applicants. Is that?
We have, okay.
Three. We've been, we've interviewed three.
We've interviewed three. Um, the only thing I would offer for people to think about as a possible alternative to uh going to seven tonight is to go to six, you know, fill out the sixth position on the board first and then um see how that goes and then see if um the chair still feels a seventh member is needed um after, you know, sometime with the sixth member. That's 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 the only, you know, alternative thought that occurred to me.
Uh, Bernard?
One problem with that is that um although the PCAC has been functioning under Linda's leadership and under Judy's leadership very collaboratively, um, you know, we should be concerned about uh votes that uh uh would end up in a tie if there's an even number of members. So for that reason, I would um urge us to go with seven members.
Any other thoughts? Mike, I assume your hand is up from the last comment.
Last time, yeah, sorry.
No worries.
My head is, you know, gets stuck up there when it's this late.
I know. Miriam?
Um, I I guess I'm I'm kind of neutral. I think um you know, it seems to be that it is a lot of work. I think Bernard makes a good point about um, seven, you know, about having an uneven number. Uh, and I I I think we have two uh candidates that uh would bring different and important things to the committee, so.
Great. Okay, so let's start with this question, which is um whether or not to expand to seven members. And then we will talk about who those uh appointments will be um once we know how many vacancies there are. So I will move expansion of the PCAC to seven members. All those in favor? Bernard?
Hi.
John?
No.
Miriam?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, so now we have two vacancies to consider. Um, I was quite moved by Karen Ambrose. Um, and I've worked with Scott Ananian on a number of things. I will be quite blunt, we do not always agree, but I find him to be very reasonable and um, what's more is I I was very impressed. One of the first warrant articles that I remember him filing. Um, a lot of people took issue with the language that was in the warrant article. Um, and he, he didn't get defensive. He worked on the warrant article and was very collaborative. Even poked fun at himself for some of the errors that were caught by either select board members or advisory committee members or whatnot. Because he knew that his goal was to try to get it across the finish line. Um, so I I've been very impressed at his ability to not only work with people who with whom he disagrees, but he's a worker. And this committee really needs workers. So um, those are the two people who I would like to see um fill these two vacancies. And I will probably be putting those two names up. Welcome to hear thoughts from other board members. Uh, Miriam?
Uh, I agree a thousand percent. Um, I I think Scott not only is a worker, but he's a, he's a data person. He can really look at the lens. Uh, he can really look through the lens of data and and actually really um bringing a lot of insights to whatever he does using that lens. And I think he's exactly that. He he just knows how to work with people. Um, so I'm very enthusiastic and supportive of Scott. And I didn't really know Karen before her interview, so I really, all I know is of her interview. Um, but you know, based on that, I think that would be an an also added value voice to the committee since it's expanding.
Hello.
Mike?
I may as well try a minute and say that like uh like a couple of us, I've sometimes been on the opposite side of something from Scott, but uh I think he is a very thoughtful person. I absolutely appreciate uh his ability to look at data carefully. Uh, and I think he'd be a great addition to this. Uh, data is important, uh, and most definitely important, especially figuring out what to do with it. Uh, and Karen Ambrose had a very impressive uh interview with us and uh so I would support adding both of them.
Uh, Bernard?
Yeah, okay, let me figure out how to say this. Uh, first of all, Karen Ambrose is is incredibly, that would be incredibly valuable member of the committee. Uh, her experience um in in town, uh, specific experience, which I don't want to go into um is such that she would bring a perspective and an understanding that uh this this committee needs. Um, regarding Scott, I like Scott. I work with him. I respect him. Um, even when I disagree with him. Um, but I'm gonna abstain on this vote because I don't want to vote against him because, you know, he 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 really does, as Heather and and others have said. Um, he really is willing to listen. Uh, expresses views, which, you know, I may disagree with, but I also listen because maybe he says something that will either change my view or give me a different nuance or or a different uh way of understanding my views. And and I really respect him for that. Um, but you know, I have to abstain because he does come to the committee with a concerning history of uh anti-Brookline police uh actions, including, I think someone mentioned the unfortunate uh um uh budget amendment uh to defund the police. Uh, I think that he has matured, if I can use that word, I don't mean it negatively, Scott. Uh, matured beyond that um and will will work with the PCAC to further improve what I call are very good, though not yet perfect, uh, police department. And specifically, you know, something we saw, um, you know, in the past, attributing, you know, the sins of uh uh police departments in faraway places or even next door to us in 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 Boston to the Brookline Police Department. Uh, as if we would do that um if a teacher uh did something bad in Boston or somewhere else and we wanted to defund the schools. So, yeah, I think that um, you know, Scott really, you know, has maturity to, you know, play a important role, a good role uh on on the committee and would not make the mistakes I think were made in the past.
Um, John?
Thanks. Um, I I'm gonna join Bernard in abstaining for a couple of reasons. Uh, first of all, I want to say something positive.
I was expecting you to abstain.
Don't, don't interrupt.
I I wasn't sure what Bernard said, but anyway. Um, uh, I wa- I want to say, you know, a word uh on behalf of uh Karen Ambrose, uh fantastic uh applicant and no question but that she has my enthusiastic vote. Um, I'm gonna say a word also, and I said it at the time when um Lee Greenblatt interviewed with us. Um, you know, the Lee is not one of those people who comes on, you know, uh guns blazing, you know, with uh ta- telling you, o- overstating his his qualifications. He just was very modest about it. Um, and, you know, let us know that he has been um a a long time resident of the town and that he has been a CERT volunteer. And because of his run CERT, by the way, is a co- community emergency response team, and they're the ones who had their dinner tonight to honor, you know, s- some of their volunteers. Um, through that work in as a volunteer for CERT, yeah, he got to know police on a person-to-person basis. His respect for them deepened. Um, and um he's a, he's been a lifelong Brookline resident and and wants to serve the town. So Lee, thank you very much for applying. I don't, I don't think you're going to get the votes of a majority of the select board tonight, but I I think we are all glad that you applied. Um, that being said, um but let's be very upfront about it. Uh, the select board got uh an email earlier today um expressing some very deep reservations about Scott um from a person within the police department and essentially using the language that um Scott is anti-police. And that Scott is entitled to argue that that is not true. Um, but he needs to know that that's the perception that was created. Um, you know, by some of the actions that were taken in the last couple of years, including the initially the seventeen percent police budget cut and then the, I think it was eleven percent fallback police budget cut. Um, and frankly, so not not rhetoric by Scott, but you know, rhetoric by people who were backing those budget cuts that was that was anti-police. I mean, there is one organization that was um overtly um in favoring abolishing the police. So the PCAC is always going to have to be a commission where the police feel welcome to interact with citizens and to solve problems together, working collaboratively with citizens. I have personally witnessed situations in which um at least one commission in this town became a place where police felt so unwelcome that they essentially stopped coming to meetings. So things can go the wrong way i- i- if 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 people allow the perception to be perpetuated, that it's us against them, um, and that you know, the role of this person or that person is is to be anti-police. Um, that doesn't mean you have to back the police um down the line and and it doesn't mean that there there isn't a uh a a serious need for change. Let's all face the the reality that we policing is going to be different in the future than it has been in the past and the than it is this. and than it is this very day. Um, but to get there is going to require a lot of collaboration and a lot of trust, trust. So I do hope this appointment, which apparently is going to go forward with the votes of three other members of this board, um, works out, but I, I think, um, my role in, in abstaining is intended to send a signal that it's important to be very careful about how we go about, uh, carrying out agendas in this town and be, be very careful and believe, I have to apply this to myself and, uh, I'm not always good at it. But I try my best, but we've got to be very careful not to come across as having some sort of an axe to grind against, um, our fellow citizens in this department or that department. And that's the only reason that I'm abstaining on this vote.
Um, Mike, your hand is still up. I'm wondering if that was on purpose, but I'm gonna call on Miriam.
Thank you. Yeah, mine was definitely not, uh, uh, by accident. Um, gosh, John, I just think there's so much irony in what you just said. You have just, in fact, uh, what's it, you know, made the flames higher. That's by, by creating this false binary that if we want to question budgets or departments that we are supposed to be questioning, if we want to have accountability, if we want to look under the hood of our police department or any department for that matter, that somehow we are anti-that department. That is a false binary. We are neither pro nor anti, our job as the select board. And this is a tension that we have that you and I, Bernard and Heather and Mike, that we have, that's a healthy tension, right? Our job is to look under the hood and maybe we don't agree with what we see or, but we gotta look under the hood and I don't think a warrant article but I think it's looking under degree approach prob- we also obviously don't agree. We're, we're, we just had this similar conversation about Parks and Rec, frankly. So, um, I, I think it's a false binary. I've said that three times. I don't think I need to say it again. Um, I, 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 I think that Scott has proven himself time and time and time again to be a person about getting the job done, to be a team player, to be a thoughtful person. We've all had disagreements with him and yet we all come out completely respecting how he handles himself. That's exactly the kind of person you want on a committee like this. So, uh, I, I just, I think we need to be careful about what we say. And of course, we got that email from somebody who criticizes us up and down, left and right, everything we do. So I'm not gonna bow to, to an email that perpetuates this narrative that if we don't do what, what's asked, then we continue this us versus them. I, I don't see it as us versus them. I'm never gonna see it as us versus them. Um, people can say that all they want, but I just don't think it's true.
So I'm also frustrated with, um, the dialogue around this. Um, and I'm frustrated because I see it on, and I hate to use the term both sides because that has been used by someone I don't really respect all that much. Um, I was a little surprised and disappointed when I heard the term, um, oh, this police department doesn't need to change. Um, in one of the interviews for this position. And it's exactly that kind of gut reaction that put my antenna on alert. Um, I don't agree with everyone who wants the police department to change because of, you know, whatever agenda, uh, they, they may have. But I think most of us think that we can always do better. Th- this select board can always do better. We try real hard. There are lots of limitations. You know, our memories are only so big. Um, there's a lot going on. We have one night a week, basically, to try to jam all of this stuff through. Um, I would just like some acknowledgement from even the, the ardent supporters of the police department that there are, there's room for improvement. And I would love, on the other side, to see some people who are very critical of our police department acknowledge that it's not as bad as, say, you know, Minneapolis was. Um, so I'll just leave it there. Um, I will move both names, but each individually. So let's start with Karen Ambrose. Um, I will move her first. All those in favor uh, of Karen Ambrose to be appointed to the PCAC, please vote aye. Bernard?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And then I will move, uh, Scott Ananian for the other vacancy, uh, for PCAC. All those in favor? Bernard?
I'm going to abstain, not because of the letter from the, uh, Police Union President, but because of the reasons I mentioned earlier, which I think are valid. I do, however, I like, I think all of us respect, uh, Scott and think he will make a fine a- and, and excellent member of the PCAC.
John?
Abstain.
Miriam?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. I believe that is the conclusion of our business this evening.
Sorry.
No worries. A reminder to folks that we are meeting on Tuesday. Uh, and it will be completely virtual. And John Van Squeak, our Vice Chair, may be chairing. Stay tuned. Most likely.
You know something I don't know?
I missed something, Heather. You better text me.
Bye all.